Yeah, it's backwards.
Yeah, working well. She is fit now. Yeah, now, slow.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome once again to our first meeting of December. This council is going to have one more meeting, which is the 15th, and that will be the last meeting of the year. I would like to invite everyone, because we're going to have a special presentation to those councillors who are leaving us, and I definitely would like everyone to accompany us to celebrate, not to celebrate their departure, but to celebrate their commitment to our city. So I hope that you will come on the 15th and share with us those beautiful moments. We're also going to take the time to take some pictures for posterity. So I would like to ask everyone to stand up for a moment of silent meditation.
Council President, I think this moment should be taken. Patrick and Peter Blanchett's mom passed away, and I would like to take this moment of silence for the Blanchett family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy, will you lead us in the pleasure of allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Vasquez.
Present.
Counsel LaPlante.
Here.
Counsel Tumi.
Here.
Counsel Reyes.
Present.
Counsel Almonte.
Present.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Noted.
Counsel Abdu.
Here.
And Counsel Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez.
Present.
Counsel President Maldonado.
Here. Councillors, I would like to enter to motion to approve the minutes of 9:15 and 10:06:15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any changes or discussion on any items on the agenda? If there is none, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Abstain, okay.
Got it.
Do you need to roll call for that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
He wasn't part of it.
Okay, we're going to go into public participation. We'd like to remind all the participants that you need to adhere, where's Sandy?
Just about.
Oh. Will you?
Sure, two minutes and then...
It is. Sandy, will you please, the time?
Yes.
I would like to remind everyone...
Just a point of order. I really don't think it should be us doing this.
No, I agree, I agree. It's just that, since our secretary is out for a while...
Maybe we have two clerks here, maybe we can get your assistant clerk to do it.
Okay, okay.
Because otherwise, you know, we have gotten complaints from people...
Well, that's fine, that's fine.
You know, even though you do a good job, Sandy, but we've gotten complaints from people that lament. Yeah, Sandy, even though you do a good job, you know...
There you are, you have the power of ringing the bell. Okay, again, I would like to remind all the participants that they have a time limit, and when you hear the first bell, it means that you need to wrap up. When you hear the second bell, please stop. So, thank you. The first person that I would like to recognize is Mr. Malley.
Good evening, honorable members. Mayor Rivera campaigned promise of safe Lawrence only possible you as our elected official and Mayor Rivera's support of our police department and the senior officers' union. Our police department under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen, stand up for our police officers, and support their union. Our city has been great because of hard-working DPW workers. If you workers and the best leadership, our DPW workers are in their campaign for collective bargaining negotiation. We, as the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera, support our DPW worker in their campaign promises. Fire after fire, our brave firefighters sacrificed their safety so our citizen be safe. We, the citizen, demand of you and Mayor Rivera, support our firefighters. Our public school with the leadership of Honorable Superintendent Ruddy is moving forward. Turnaround plan has created more Level 1 school, more high school graduate. We, the citizen, demand of you, support our teachers and their union. In the beginning of this year, for the newly elected members, we, the citizen, demand that move Lawrence forward by supporting our police department and their union, firefighters and their union. In the history of our city, this is the third time we sing the recall petition. We demand, as a citizen of Mayor Rivera, respect the fate of our citizen. Instead of fighting the citizen's will in a court, respect their citizen, and petition goes on. Thank you.
The next person is Francis Selak.
Hello, Lawrence City Council. My name is Francis Selak. I live in the great city of Lawrence. I live at 245 Broadway, Lawrence. It's time now, it's very important. I hate discrimination. It's time for Larry Hester to get in the Hall of Fame at the Volk. He averaged 29.9 points a game. He should be in the Volk Hall of Fame. He was not only a graduate of the Volk School, he's a graduate of Merrimack College, too. Discrimination is terrible. We gotta root, we gotta, we have to put Larry in the Hall of Fame, and I want to be by his side, because I played basketball against Larry. I jump up, and he'd be behind me and over me. I say, "This guy is amazing. He has a lot of heart." The point is, he should be in the Hall of Fame. Please, anything you can do, if you saw Larry play, I'd appreciate it. He's my friend. Okay, now, there's outstanding service in the city of Lawrence. I see this woman everywhere. Val DeMilla. I like, I would like, if you, you seem that she is very good, to give her some kind of award or recognition, because this woman isn't, when the Spanish festival is there, she's checking the grills. She's everywhere. I get, I'm everywhere, I see Val DeMilla, and she's doing an excellent job. If you think so, this is important to me. We need more recognition for excellent city worker like Val DeMilla. Please, help her. Thank you very much. Okay, now, I hate to say it, I feel like crying, but it's time to say goodbye. I did the best I could. I wanted to work, but I fell. I can't work no more. God bless everybody, and thank you from the bottom of my heart for helping me, and thank Patty Darling for putting me on, on the job in the DPW. Thank you very much. God bless you all.
The next person in line is Dick Blatchford.
Good evening. Dick Blatchford, 3 Harrison Street. Good to be back. Deliberately stayed away from making comments about the leadership, so the leadership could not claim I was biased during the election. But now I critique the leadership when it becomes apparent there is none. Good example, declaring you for the recall only after you've safely been elected. Constantly trying to undermine the administration, constantly trying to undermine this administration. And one thing that really rubs me, as a leader, try starting a meeting at 7 o'clock. I don't think in the last two years you've ever started a meeting at 7 o'clock. You've got enough people here at 7 o'clock, bang the gavel and get started. And last but not least, 608 days. Remember that, folks. That's where Mr. Maldonado will take out his papers to be mayor. Thank you.
The next person in line is Joseph D'Amico.
Joseph D'Amico, 11 Lorenzo Road. It's cold outside. It's 28 degrees. Do you know if anybody from the city, the police department, fire department, are checking on the homeless? Are their homeless shelters open? Now, going to a different folks, the shelters that we have, that are, we are building for the veterans, or for low-income people, are they for the Laurentians first? That's what we should do. It's part of our tax money that's going to be paying for them. Let's support all the veterans, homeless, needy, and whatever, with our tax money, but make sure that they're from the Lawrence area. We cannot afford to keep bringing things up. Low affordable housing in the city of, in the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, out of the newest survey that just came out in 2014, for a family of four is $78,000. Where did they get that number? Probably Monarch Lofts, the new Lofts. People are moving in there that are making good money, so it offsets the rest of the neighborhoods. So, because you're looking at a low affordable housing for people, and signing more paperwork and giving away our tax money, because they're only paying 4% of our tax rates and all this other stuff, they get, they get the benefits. Let the city get the benefits first, or the taxpayers. There's 284 tax people, taxpayers, I think that's the number off the, the website, of people that own small, two apartments, three, three deckers, so duplexes. So, let's do our thing. I don't care about if you raise the taxes, that's fine, but let us use the money the proper way. Thank you.
The next person in line is Dick Russell.
Good evening, councillors. My name is Dick Russell. I reside at and pay taxes on 34 Cross Street in Lawrence. Just prior to the holidays, I sent all of you and incoming councillor at large opinion a recent report in the city of Northampton on the feasibility of a pilot program in their city. I figured if the turkey didn't put you to sleep, this 13-page report would. The only reason I beat on you for a pilot program is the fact that you were elected to look after the best interests of the resident, of the city and its residents. I know shortly you'll be having a public hearing on the tax clarification for property for next year's taxes. Before you set any tax clarification numbers, classification numbers, have you, the council, made sure every penny has been taken off of the table in the city of Lawrence? Every penny means all fees as mandated in the city ordinances. Have you considered raising these fees and fines for non-payment before you consider a gender right on 293-15? I know discussing and changing city ordinances is a time-consuming procedure, but by doing it would show good faith in the council's part in both fulfilling your duties and keeping the city running and the citizens happy. I do realize that we are entering year six of a gender right on 3910, the charter review. I guess the government just works slow in mysterious ways. Now, going back to the Northampton pilot report, both Northampton and Lawrence are similar cities tax-wise, with health, educational, religious institutions, along with a variety of federal, state, federal, state, local government properties being tax-exempt. If Northampton's considering a pilot program as a source of revenue enhancement, why shouldn't Lawrence consider a pilot program? One last question. Why does the city low-ball a value of tax-exempt property values? If one were to go through the Attorney General's Division of Charities website and go through the latest tax records for the likes of Lawrence General Hospital and Central Catholic High, one would find a vast difference in the values of land as opposed to what their accountants allow in their tax filings. One other thing, I know the city frequently goes to LGH on police matters arising from issues happening at the hospital. My thoughts, tell Lawrence General if you don't want to wish to contribute to the city in the form of a pilot payment, let them form their own police department, like Mass General or Boston University Medical Center. Let them, LGH numbers crunchers crunch numbers, and they very quickly would come to the conclusion paying into a pilot program would be far cheaper than avoiding one. Thank you for the time.
The next person in line is Joe Goen. Would you like to, that's, where's Joe? Oh, would you like to wait on to the...
More comments for the...
Yes, okay, then, would you rather wait for the presentation?
Provide more time.
Okay, great, great. Okay, that concludes public participation. We are now going into public hearings. Mr. Clerk.
Document 281, 2015, City Council, November 4th. Notice is hereby given. The City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 1st, 2015, in Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input. Concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinance of the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following new chapter to the municipal code to be entitled "City of Lawrence Complete Streets Policy and Regulation" with the following provisions: establishing a purpose, citing definitions, policy for the ordinance, goals and objectives, the implementation in minimum standards for streets, establishing guidelines and assessment of milestones and measurements. The above summary provided was published with the advisory that'd be considered, not be considered as a complete, a substitute for the completed non-abridged copy, which was provided to the public for examination in the office of City Clerk during regular business hours. This notice was published on Sunday, November 22nd.
Before we, I allowed public participation, there's a presentation that is being, that is going to be done by Mr. McCarthy, so I'm going to let you do the presentation first, and then I will open up for public participation. So, go ahead.
There you go. I'm Daniel McCarthy, I'm City of Lawrence Municipal Land use planner, and we're here to present this ordinance, and we've prepared a PowerPoint presentation to enlighten you and give you some information about this. We had recently brought this to the ordinance committee and presented, and they felt that it was a very interesting presentation that was deserved to be heard by the full committee, and we put this into a PowerPoint presentation itself, and we have some packets to hand out as well. Some of you will have to move. Hi. Okay, this, we're going to make this presentation in two parts, and then we have a number of speakers afterwards that we hope to come up and speak in endorsement of the proposal for the complete streets policy. I'm going to begin the first half of it, and Bill Malora from the Mayor's Health Task Force is going to finish the second half of it. So, I'll begin with the question that everybody, that's on everybody's mind, what are complete streets? And it seems pretty simple. The words "complete" and "streets," we all know, and the definition is "integrated connected network of streets that are safe and accessible for all people, regardless of age, ability, income, ethnicity, and, or mortal travel." And it seems like a fairly straightforward, simple, reasonable type of definition, and a lot of people ask, "Well, then, why do we need a complete street policy? Isn't that common sense that we should have complete streets?" And it's, it's a situation where, through years of habit, we haven't done this. Complete streets are based on a variety of modes of travel. The way that modern municipal planning and development has been done has been based solely upon one invention in the past 50 years, and that is the automobile. All municipal planning was, was designed around the automobile and the creation of suburban tracts of housing and getting people to and from work in large, with large parking lots, commercial malls, and other forms of, of development, which kind of estrange all of us. It's funny that most, most development in, in city planning arises around modes of travel, and Lawrence's wasn't based upon the car, it was actually based upon the railroad that the city of Lawrence has found at the advent of the railroad. So, the city of Lawrence is faced with two contradictory ideas of how the streets were developed. The state and modern developers and the federal government have initiated a new level of planning, which they hope to integrate into the entire nation's framework, and incorporates the ideas of smart growth, of livability, of transit-oriented design, and, and it also relies upon the notion of flexibility. That's why we're talking about a policy today instead of a regulation. Regulations are very strict and immovable objects. They, they work in a cookie cutter process, which is what was done in the past. Streets were paved and laid out in formulas that were made by, you know, national design guidelines, which didn't take into consideration each community's needs and requirements. So, what a policy does, it creates a level of planning at a higher level, incorporates it into all decision-making processes, whether it's from the, from the planning standpoint, from community development, from the Department of Public Works, city engineering, and then even to the point of incorporating all police and fire department needs into that. So, as you see, the policy is not a one-size-fits-all description. The idea of sensitivity to neighborhoods and context is important, and as you can see here, there's a, a single idea is reflected in all, in all three pictures, but it's done in a different manner. And the concept here is the incorporation of bicycles into traffic. This is just one of the ideas that, that, that complete streets, it's a, but the idea says that we're not going to create these, these bike lanes how you have on the upper-left-hand turn corner for every situation. In some situations, we're, we have smaller outdated streets, which might have to incorporate bikes, and then, in a rural setting, you might have large streets where you can have bike shoulders. If you move to the next one, there's an example of, that works in this municipality, because this is an actual project, which is currently being developed and is being constructed as we speak. I think everybody who's familiar with, with the city recognizes Merrimack Street and some of the local businesses and the Riverwalk. As you can see, this is Merrimack Street by the design plans using incorporating smart growth elements. You have bike paths, you have wide sidewalks, you have areas where there's slow traffic for, in also areas where the, the traffic can be going to two lanes to allow passing. As anybody familiar with now, it's one lane in either direction and cars on both sides. We incorporated into the, the notion, the specific needs of the city to make, and actually increase the amount of parking on the street. One of the, the ideas was that people thought it would decrease parking. What we've done is widened the street to a useful level and, and made it more passable in the better, in better safety issues with that. Another, now, this is a large concept, but a smaller concept that a lot of you are familiar with are the changes that are being done at Park and Lawrence Street intersections, where we created road softenings in intersections where the traffic doesn't come in as sharply, and the pedestrians are now, the pedestrian accessways are designed to, with wider sidewalks, handicapped accessibilities, and timers and voice modules on the lights. That's all going to be incorporated into next spring in development. So, as you can see, the, the idea of complete streets is to develop a mode of thought that is used every time the smallest to the largest job is going to be done. This idea hasn't been created in a vacuum. We've been working with national groups, local groups, and regional groups, as well as relying upon some of the other cities that have already worked on their conditions. But, working with the city departments, we've been very specific to incorporate the needs of the city, and some of the ideas that we've incorporated into it take the, the ideas of side, refuse pickup at sidewalk, snow removal, an issue that they might not need, worry about down south, in the, in the idea of police enforcement, are all incorporated into this policy in some manner, so that there's nothing left out in that when we do design it, all the departments are kept in mind. Will we go to the next one? So, here's a lot to see here, but, but the big thing to take from this is, is that there are a myriad of examples of how this will affect the everyday life of the people in the city. Traffic and safety is one, and transit facilities is another. If you go to the next slide, you see pedestrian facilities and bicycle facilities. What I think is stressed here is the idea that, the idea that cars that are used as the end-all transportation mode is, in many minds, outmoded, and, and certainly hasn't been as productive as, as we'd like to see. The city has a lot of health problems, which we think that pedestrian bicycle facilities will address, but that's all going to be addressed and discussed later. That finishes my portion of the presentation. If you want to go to the next slide.
Ms. Laura?
Thank you. Good evening, city councils. My name is Bill Malora, and I'm the coordinator for the City of Lawrence Mayor's Health Task Force, which is the Health Coalition. I reside at 71 East Pleasant Street, and I'm here to do the second piece, and probably wondering, this is sort of an office of planning and development kind of thing, but it's not. Actually, the reason why this work, before I move forward, the reason why this work has happened in the way that it's happening is because the city, through the Mayor's Health Task Force, received a grant from the Department of Public Health called Municipal Wellness and Leadership Grant, and it's one of those mass emotion grants, and it's a state, mass emotion is sort of a statewide initiative that is looking at reducing the obesity rates and chronic disease rates in our cities. And we already know that Lawrence, being the way that we are, we have a lot of challenges health-wise, so this is why I sort of come in. And the work is being done, but the work has been done sort of by different departments, and what this allows me to do is not to do this work, but rather get people together and coordinate and sort of create system changes, so that moving forward, it's not just about a policy or just about a grant, but rather the way that we do business as a whole, and how can we communicate with one another, and departments can communicate with one another to achieve one common goal. I did put in the packet, a one page, like a brief description of the Mayor's Health Task Force, because I don't know if I've ever brought anything, so you get a, sort of an idea of what we do, who we are, what do we focus on, and how do we do the work we do. So, you have that packet there. And it also supports the Healthy Active Living Resolution that was adopted last July, in July of 2014. There wasn't a Healthy Active Resolution, we had a press conference here in this, in Uh, there wasn't a Healthy Active Resolution, we had a press conference here in this, in the same building, and the salsa sign that you see when you walk into this building, that was part of that Healthy Active Living Resolution. The salsa campaign is, uh, supporting active lifestyles for all. So, we're looking at the built environment in many ways. There's many benefits, obviously, and Dan McCarthy mentioned a few of them, but safer streets, it's, it's our goal. I know that last year and this year, we held two ciclovias, that rerouting of, you know, traffic to allow for pedestrians to, to sort of have an open space and safe space to walk, that's, that's all part of the same concept. And so, creating a safer street is important for us. We know pedestrian safety, bike safety are major issues for us, and so we need to tackle it in different ways. And when we build policies and sort of create a culture and a system that we're thinking in that sense and we're planning in that sense, that's what we're trying to do. So, there have been many, many benefits to sidewalk, uh, one of the benefits of sidewalks. So, uh, there's many studies that show that about eighty-eight percent, uh, there's an eighty-eight percent reduction in pedestrian, uh, crashes when there's sidewalks that are properly built and properly connect. Shoulders reduce pedestrian crashes by about seventy-one percent. And if you look at countdown signals, that sometimes, back in twenty-twelve, we did a walkability audit in partnership with Groundwork Lawrence and Walk Boston, we were looking at also those signals and, and the, you know, the crosswalks, 'cause they do play a significant role. We have a community that really, compared to other communities, car ownership in this community, it's lower than our neighboring community. So, we have a community that's transit, you know, that's walking, biking, you know, using taxi or transportation, public transportation in some form. Improving health benefits for our children, uh, in our state. Childhood obesity, we all know that it's not a, a big, uh, secret that across the state and actually across the nation, there's an epidemic. Obesity now second to tobacco, has been identified as, as one of those preventable, um, diseases that we need to, or conditions that we need to pay attention to. And so, we're trying to create an environment through our parks and sort of activating some of our parks and also this policy and the ciclovia, where families can come out, feel safe, and have an environment where they can actually get into, you know, get out and, and move around. For aging population, we don't have a large aging population, but we have, I don't know if you've gone to the Lawrence Senior Center, we have a very lively senior center and community center. And there was a study recently, um, that I can't cite the source yet, 'cause it hasn't been approved, but, uh, they did a few focus groups in the, some of the cities within Merrimack Valley. And one of the major issues, uh, was accessibility and transportation for the aging, uh, aging population to access services and access, uh, health, healthcare services. So, we need to pay attention to that when we're creating, uh, projects such as the Merrimack Streets, such as these other projects. Supports economic development, because a city that looks clean, that looks wide, that has plants, that has, you know, trees, that has all these things, sort of tends to attract other businesses. And we have different, uh, groups within the city that are trying to do that work, and we're trying to support it through this. Increases mobility, because when you're walking around, when you see a park, I don't know if you've noticed, when there was a, uh, all the improvements to the, uh, Common Campanoni Park, you stand there and you wanna be there. It looks clean, it looks nice, it's bright, I mean, it's, it attracts families. When we attract families to parks, some of the other violence and crime sort of, there's a reduction. It's been proven. So, we need to figure out a way to do that. Safer Stu School is a program that has been here in Lawrence, it's here, they're at the table with us, actually, and they were doing a lot of pedestrian safety and bike safety, uh, with some of our schools already locally. And so, all of these efforts sort of combined together, sort of lead to the best thing, which is enhancing our resident and visitor experience. That's ultimately what we want, because that's what's gonna change our city. So, I have to talk to you a little bit about why we're doing this. So, there is a small incentive, fifty million dollars. There is a small incentive that has been created for communities, um, to actually be part of this process. Uh, one of them is that, basically, the Mass Department of Transportation, uh, has adopted this complete street and have created a certification program. So, with this, we don't only get funding for projects that we prioritize, but we also get technical assistance that we can access. And when you do technical assistance, we're looking really at what are the best practices? What, what are other communities doing? And as, as of now, there's about twenty-five cities and towns that have adopted some sort of a complete street policy already, and they're working on that. Uh, but also, uh, it's five years, and, uh, there's eligibility criteria, so we are very careful crafting this complete street policy. This complete street policy was crafted following the best one. Top, among the top ten in the nation are the City of Salem, and I believe it was Luxington? So, there were two, so they were crafted around that and Smart Growth America, looking and paying attention to those particularly, um, areas that we need to cover to make sure that we are, we are having a policy that works, but also that we're eligible to apply for this technical assistance and other sources of funding. So, um, next, please. So, those are the seven sort of components. So, what's gonna happen is we need to file an application with the Mass Department of Transportation, but before we do that, we need to adopt a policy. If we don't have a policy, then, we're not really following what are the best practices. And that's how they want this, this funding, um, spent. And we did a lot of advocacy with the Mass Public Health Association at various levels to make sure that this funding was, was, was made available and it was built in, into the, um, the state. We have to do a baseline inventory, uh, and that includes for pedestrians and bikes. We have to develop procedures that will incorporate the complete streets into routine road work. I mean, this is just not a policy that needs to sit on some shelf, it's a policy that's gonna sort of dictate and help us, guide us through a process that GPW may be, when we're planning any project, when the planning, uh, and Development Department is planning any projects, that they're looking at all these components and their examples and things and ways to follow. There's a review, um, process for, for private development, and we have to share, like, a, set a five-year goal for that, and then provide annual reports. I can give you more information about that if it's needed. Next, please. And so, this is gonna be done in three tiers. Tier number one is funding people that, sort of looking at the program framework. Number one is really, it's for municipalities that are looking for technical assistance to develop a complete street policy. We're blessed to have a, to be a MassinMotion community, and so we have access to a series of technical assistants, people with, with a lot of expertise. And so, that group, when Dan talked about not doing in vacuum, this work in vacuum, that's what it means. We have a steering committee that has the Merrimack Planning, Planning Commission, we have different people that really have been part of this process at the state and regional level. Tier number two is prioritizing a plan development. So, that, now that we have created this policy, if it's adopted, it has to score a certain number, and based on that, then we can start accessing some funding, and then Project Three, it goes to sort of the implementation piece. Once we have prioritized a project that makes sense, that supports pedestrian and bike safety and sort of streets, uh, safe streets, then you can access up to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, uh, for year one for, to do this work. Next, please. And so, those are just, you have this in your packet, those are the things that, that sort of compose the prioritization plan. So, when you're looking at a project, you need to sort of list out what are the location, what is the infrastructure of that project, what is the goal, how is it gonna increase bike, you know, bike, uh, bikeability, walkability, or transit? Uh, how's, how has it been determined to be a priority for our community and et cetera, et cetera? But really, there is a process, and there's also a very important, a performance measure. So, we need to make sure that once we do this improvement, that there's a way to, to, um, to measure it. And they give you some examples of how you can do that, but the other piece is that there are members of the planning, uh, department who have been part of this Mass DOT training, and so they are also already aware of what is that process, uh, what does that process look like? Next, please. And so, just to give you a timeline of what this grant will look like, so, um, by any time between December and March, there's gonna be a training. And so, it's not, you're not, you're not going into this blindly, you're getting some training, some technical assistance, and all the way leading to where the, the funding will be available and the evaluation piece, which is gonna be through, um, next July. So, it's gonna be, excuse me, quite, uh, quickly, so, next. And I just left you a list of the contacts. The MassinMotion, my, our MassinMotion, Lawrence MassinMotion, has a steering committee that has been working on the complete streets, and that is inclusive, you know, Theresa Park and Jim Barnes, who's here also today, have been an intricate part of our, of our process. Uh, we have been involving the Board of Health, which is why you see them here, uh, Dr. Gorn and Dr. Razer, who have been sort of part and, and have been supporting this because of the whole obesity and chronic disease piece, uh, obviously, the burning, uh, in our city. So, um, I think that concludes my part. If you have any questions, I'll be happy, Dan, to answer any of them. Thank you. And thank you, Alfred.
Okay, now, I would like to entertain people from the audience to speak about this project. Please identify yourself and your address, please.
Good evening, councilors, chairman. Um, I'm Dr. Joel Gorn, I'm the chairman of the Board of Health and your city physician. This is Dr. John Razer, who also sits on your Board of Health, we're both family physicians in the City of Lawrence. We come before you today, uh, to show our support for this complete streets ordinance. We have a written statement that we're gonna provide to you all on letterhead from, from the Board of Health. We, as members of the City of Lawrence Board of Health, are writing in support of the proposed complete streets ordinance for the City of Lawrence. We see this ordinance as an important step in supporting healthy lifestyles among the residents of Lawrence and combating chronic disease in our community. As you are likely aware, the ordinance is part of a wider effort in our city to support community health and physical activity. Physical inactivity is the fifth-leading cause of preventable death and disability in the United States, contributing to about two-hundred-and-fifty early deaths per year.
Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, sorry. This calculates out to more than eighty deaths that come too soon each year in our city. Inadequate physical activity contributes to these deaths through dozens of serious chronic diseases, ranging from diabetes and heart disease to illnesses such as dementia, chronic pain, breast and colon cancer, and depression. The benefits to the complete streets ordinance go far beyond physical activity. More people choosing walking and cycling for transportation, and less vehicular traffic has more immediate health benefits as well. Motor vehicles are the principal source for particular air pollution, particulate air pollution. The two-thousand-and-eight air pollution in the Merrimack Valley Pediatric Asthma Study demonstrated that the risk for childhood asthma in Lawrence is directly associated with proximity to highly trafficked streets. Perhaps the most urgent health need addressed by the complete streets ordinance is that of safety, particularly that of our children. Accidents are the number-one cause of death of children in the United States from age one to eighteen, and accidents involving motor vehicles are the biggest contributor to this tragic statistic. Unfortunately, children in low-income communities are particularly at risk for traffic injury and fatality. These deaths are largely preventable through investment in adequate crosswalks, sidewalks, and other infrastructure improvements. Adopting the complete streets ordinance will allow access to additional state funds to support this work and help us transform our streets, our larger, largest public space, into space that are safe for all ages and users. Please join us in support of this important ordinance. We see it as an important step towards a Lawrence that is more active, less polluted, more sustainable, safer, and a healthier place to live for all of us. Respectfully, Dr. Gorn and Dr. Razer. Thank you, councilors, and we hope you have your support.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Please come forward and identify yourself.
Good evening, Homem Ali, fifth Street, Essex Street. Since the years of ninety, the, the population and demographic composition of our city has transformed. Overpopulation and the children walking back to, from the school has been overcrowded the streets. This ordinance is very important a step in safeguarding our children and safety, our citizens, especially between the snowfalls of the last year and in upcoming years. We need this ordinance to create a safe city and safe environment. This ordinance not only helps to improve the quality of health of our children and our citizens, also create better mobility for our cars. Our, our city now has population more than eighty-three thousand. We need to approve this ordinance to improve quality of our life and our citizens. Thank you.
Come forward.
Oh, my legs, sorry, my legs. I agree on this ordinance very much, but I can see the picture, the whole picture. The stadium is beautiful. We lose two-hundred-and-fifty thousand every year, we have to make a million. Dirty events a year at the stadium, get a stadium commission, let's make money. Across the street, we need, at the Showcase Cinema, is an empty building. We need Lawrence to be safe first. I got robbed of a thousand dollars on Broadway, nobody even cared, the cops don't care, nobody cares. Prostitution, pimps on Broadway, we need a police station on Broadway. We need the state police barracks in Lawrence, not Andover, where it's safe, in Lawrence, where it's dangerous. This program is great, but we need to work together with the police, the state police, and clean up our city of all the drugs, prostitution. If we do that, this grant will be great, but do it in, do something at the Showcase Cinema, put state police barracks, make the people feel safe in Lawrence, that's the number-one issue right here. Then you'll get your thing. I want my thing, you get your thing. Together, we work together. That's how you do it.
Lawrence isn't safe, I don't care what you say.
Is anybody else? Please come forward.
Jonah McCall, eleven Lorenzo Road. I'm for this program, but, you know, they mentioned the senior citizens. The citizens sit in our, on Havel Street. Essex Towers, people can't get there. We need a bus, we need more moveability for people to come from different projects. The Essex Project, the union on, the one on Essex and Jackson Street, those people can't even go shopping because there ain't no more buses going there. This got brought up at a, at a neighborhood association. So, part of the thing is, you know, you're seeing accessibility, how do we get there? You're talking about thirty-four Havel Street, how do everybody get there? They all take their cars. The closest place is Veilbrook. I don't think the people, the senior citizens from over there will walk there, they might take a cab or look for a ride. You look over there, the parking lot is full on both sides. Again, you look at Merrimack Street, there is, you know, you, you, the parking is now gone in front of the Department of Transitional Services. Where are they gonna park? They have to go, maybe, maybe it's a useful little thing of setting up the parking garage and maybe a shuttle, so they can drop people off there. If you're a senior citizen trying to get food stamps or whatever, you can't get anywhere. So, please, you know, add this stuff into your, your planning. These are the senior citizens. We got twenty-five percent of the city is senior citizens. You know, where are guys to pay the taxes? Where are the guys that need the, need the help? Not yet, I'm still capable. But, think about it. Essex Towers, how do they go shopping down to Market Basket in one fourteen? They have to take a car? No, they're gonna take service. Do we supply buses? Don't know. That should be part of this group. Give us time, add it in, just think about it. Thank you.
Kathy Runge, thirty-two Drake Street. I just wanna remind everybody that, you know, I mean, I think it's great to, um, you know, improve the accessibility of the streets and everything, but keep in mind, one, you need a lot of trash cans, trash cans, trash cans, trash cans, and two, you know, how, you, you need some way to address, um, people just throwing their trash out the window. I mean, you could be driving down a bike lane and you're gonna have to be leaving back and forth, uh, you know, over trash that people, people leave on the street. So, you need a plan to address that also.
Hi, I'm John Razer, live at forty-five Darman Street. As I mentioned, Joel mentioned, I'm on the Board of Health, I work at the Health Center. A couple of things that, that, that haven't been focused on that I think are important about this. One is that public transportation is definitely a part of this, and you'll, you'll see if you look at it. Complete streets includes, um, act, um, public transportation, because we know people that take public transportation actually get an extra twenty minutes of, of exercise, mostly walking to and from, rather, if, versus people that take cars. So, I think that's absolutely vital, you're right, about, about senior citizens. Also, our kids, we have one of the highest rates of, um, youth in this, in this state, about thirty-two percent are youth. And when you, when you add that to what Vilma mentioned about how very, how we have high rates of, of households, twenty-four percent of our households don't have cars at all, not a single car. Um, and that's actually three times higher than any other community in the Merrimack Valley. Haverhill's next at 8%. And so you take the kids, you take the people that just can't afford cars, you take the people with disabilities. It's a lot, it's a majority of our population that are dependent on others if we just have cars for transportation. So that's, it's just not just a good thing to get people out and active, which is, of course, what I care about, and safe, which is what I care about for myself and for my kids and, you know, my patients, but it's also just fair. And, you know, like we mentioned in the letter, the streets are our public space. They're our biggest public space. They belong to everybody. And when we make them accessible to not just cars, we're really opening them up. And it's, you know, a beautiful thing that we saw with Segal Via was just everybody feeling like they have ownership of the streets, and that's what this is about.
Is there anyone else in the public?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Leslie Mendina, Community Engagement Director for Groundwork Lawrence, and I reside at 298 Lawrence Street. I am here both as a supporter and contributor to this Complete Streets policy, but also as a resident. I believe that this is a really, really important thing for us as a community, to be able to give our children the opportunity to walk the streets safely. We've had some fatalities when it comes to kids crossing streets and crossing railroad crossings where they shouldn't be going. So giving them the opportunity to be able to walk safely, to be able to bike safely, is a really important thing for such a young population and a growing young population. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to close public participation.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve this ordinance pending the final draft of the ordinance by our city attorney.
There's a motion on the floor to approve this draft pending the review by our city attorney. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's go into discussion. Ms. McAlte, can you come forward, please?
Billy.
Is there a timeline that we need to follow on this?
Sure, timeline. The important date is February, that we have to get this prepared and to the state in the month of February so that they can start considering us in their evaluation criteria for the process of getting us on the list of approved cities. As I said, there's about 25 cities that have already been approved. There's about 30 more that are in the works, but we like to be ahead of the game and ahead of the curve. So the timeline on this is, the draft that's in front of you now, that's the final draft. It says draft, but that's because we're working through it in committee.
Right. Council President?
So when we first did approach...
Often, this is not the first time that we've gotten a final draft from someone.
Mm-hmm.
And we always have to go to our city attorney and have him approve.
I actually sat down with the city attorney, and he's been, he was very, he's been wrapped up in a lot of things of late, and he said it's been on his desk, and he had me to get to it, and he and I had a long discussion about the policy, and he said he was going to get a letter to me by the end of the day. I wasn't able to see it.
By the end of today? This is what he gave you?
Huh?
Did he give you this?
I wasn't able to get it, so...
Right, so we weren't able to get it from him, but I'm sure we'll be able to get it within the next couple of days.
Yep.
Which is why my ordinance is saying, you know, pending, and I know that we should have it soon because I'm pretty perceptive in terms of what's been going on, and I've been talking, I'm glad I have Dr. Razor, who's involved and who came here as a student and now having become a full-fledged doctor, has elected to live here in Lawrence and to have his family here in Lawrence. And, you know, I thank him for, you know, his participation, and Dr. Gorn, also that we know for many years, have involved themselves in trying to make, you know, lifestyles and health better for Laurentians. So it's a wonderful issue. I just have one question, you know, if I may.
Go ahead, sir.
Now resolve the issue with the city attorney. When, I know that it was just sort of a model and more of, I don't know if it was cartoonish or something on Merrimack Street. So my concern is the crossroad on Merrimack Street. While it was beautiful, nice and wide, and, you know, the whole thing looks beautiful, there is no undercut or, you probably have a better word for it.
Is that the one for the transportation building?
It's the one that you just showed here. And, you know, I have concern that any sidewalks that are done are done so with the thinking that we have many people with disabilities who need to be able, whether they're on wheelchairs or they just can't go high enough, and they said that we have 20% of elders, but we also have a lot of people with disability, elderly or not, that need to be able to move around easily. And I didn't see there on the photo that you showed, which could just be a photo, you know, it doesn't have that, what do you call it?
Wheelchair ramp.
What is it?
Wheelchair ramp.
Yeah, the wheelchair, well...
The ramp?
The wheelchair ramp.
The what?
The wheelchair ramp.
Oh, curb cut. Oh, curb cut, yeah. No, actually, the final plans are very specific. Those are just presentment details, but the plans themselves are very specific to ADA compliance. The crosswalks are all designed with the lights to have the audible for people who are sight impaired. We actually, myself and one of my coworkers, met with a tenant who lives at the Monarch, who is visually impaired, and went over the new design guidelines, and she was very happy with what was being done.
Okay, but we need to make sure that those curb cuts are there.
They are.
If you remember, we had to spend a lot of money because the city of Lawrence was sued, and rightly so, because we didn't have anything that was accessible for people with disability. Nothing was built with universal accessibility. So now, when we're doing things that are new, we should incorporate that rather than have to go back.
Yeah, we're very mindful of that.
Okay, the other piece is, when you speak about the Bay State, the Bay State Program, what exactly is the program that Bay State offers? Because I'm wondering if it's something that I have in mind in...
So that's part of some slides that the Mass Department of Transportation, and they were working in partnership. So I guess they're doing some of the work around this bond bill and Complete Streets certification. And so there, it's sort of a partnership between the two.
Okay. Bill, I know you, so I'll call you Ms. Laura for the sake of formality. Let me just say this, Ms. Laura. One of the things that I have yet to put on the agenda, and I missed it, that I was able to speak with a wonderful gentleman named Mark Ray about was the issue of capital improvement, which this is a part of naturally, and getting the utility companies to agree to, when they open up a street, to upgrade, right, infrastructure while doing it so we don't have to continue to break up the street, and then for them to do a quality job at, you know, covering up or, you know, resolving the dig.
Yes.
Because that would be a capital improvement plan that would assist us in not having to spend as much money, but it's a smart piece because we then begin to upgrade our infrastructure, you know, as we go along with the, you know, every time people come here looking for to dig into our streets, sometimes brand-new streets, and then they get all messed up. And imagine if we do that wonderful work, that beautiful work that you showed at Merrimack Street, they come in, they dig it up, and there's the problem because you're going to try to bicycle or even walk and, you know, because it's just, no matter how many times we have said it here, when they cover up the dig, it's always poor quality, and we have to change that. And we have to be smarter about getting things from people that want stuff from us. And what I'm saying is, we need to enhance our infrastructure while we're doing it. And that could be a part, I'm going to put it in as a ordinance that I would like to see happen, and that could be a part of the policy.
So in the policy, I don't know the intricate details because I'm not, even though I'm sitting within community development, I'm not a planner or developer. I'm an activist. I'm a coalition person. I mean, that's my role.
And I know you...
I'm a mobilizer.
Look at that.
But, thank you. In the, if you look at some of the stipulations written already there, this is why working with Department of Public Works, and someone talked about violence, this is why working with the Chief of Police. So just so you know, Dan McCarthy shared this policy with the Chief of Police, with DPDW, with City Engineer, with the Planning Director, with Community Development. I mean, a few people, because what it does is really looking, there was a stipulation, actually, that Dan included around that, that people that come in, they need to leave whatever the streets are that they're working on in the same conditions and with the same materials, quality materials that they were found, and that we know that's going to be a hurdle. This is not a one-size-fits-all. Go back to the presentation. This is going to be a process, a learning process for changing systems, and it's going to take a while. The other thing that's important to point out is that these projects don't come out of nowhere. There's going to be a body that's going to be formed, you know, with community members in the planning, who's going to be, who are going to be at the table, because there has to be, that has to be clear. We have to have a system, and how do we arrive to these decisions, and how do we think about this? And when there's planning, who's going to be at the table? What everybody needs to understand, including Chief of, I mean, the Police Department, that Complete Streets, what are Complete Streets components, and how we're going to integrate them into the work that we do. So it's going to be long-term.
Yeah, and I'm telling you, I love it. I told you that when you came to the ordinance committee, and I'm thinking that this might be a good additive, you know, getting in ordinance like that that could also be considered part of the policy, but definitely a part of capital improvement and savings for the city. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Yes, I do have.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm going to start by saying congratulations and thank you for doing this. This is something that the City of Lawrence, our city that we love, needs. In terms of the policy, this is the final draft?
Well, it's a final copy, but as pointed out by Council Alvarez, there is a requirement that the city attorney gets the last review as to form. And as I said, we did have a discussion with the city attorney today, and I think we should have his letter within a day or two.
Will you take any suggestions on this or no?
Excuse me?
Will you take any suggestions?
Excuse me?
Can you take any suggestions to change things up a little bit?
Oh, to the changes?
Yeah. No? Because, I mean, there is one little thing here that's kind of like, I don't see, and if you go to the goals and objective...
Which section?
Goal, goals and objective. Letter E as an N word.
Goals and objectives, yep.
Yeah. When you say that you're going to utilize Mass DOT project design and development guidance, where possible, I think we should say always, because that's when things are going to be changing, and we're not going to have a specific rule because we said, when possible. All the design that we do at the state level, we do it with this guidebook. And why to leave any specific gaps for any other things that can change the whole game? And that's a concern that I have, that's all. And overall, I read through and I love it. I think that we need it in the City of Lawrence, but there is that specific part that we should be aware of because that's when other policies and change start coming up, and then we start at one point, and without knowing it, we are in another location because we're not following, like, the guidance that it's Monday, it's Monday by Mass DOT, kind of, because all the design that is being going through the state is going through this guidebook. If you can change anything, if you can change something on there, if you say always there instead of where possible, that'd be good. If it's not, just make sure that we always follow that guidebook because that guidebook is an excellent guidebook, and I'm glad that you guys are doing, following the IT, the AstroDob, and that MUTCD, I think I saw somewhere. Those are things that we always follow at the state level, and if we, I always criticize it when I walk through the city and I see something that's never been, you know, followed or any guidance has been followed, and if you guys are going to do this, I want you guys to start properly, and I think this is a great draft, and it's a final version, perfect. And I just want to congratulate you guys.
Yeah, the goals, that portion was, you're right in some of the language, but the intention of that part was to provide some flexibility. And the section later where it says implementation of standards is more rigid and sets certain guidelines and specific thresholds that we have to meet. So I think that's part of the reason the language was, and the goals and objective was done in a more flexible area, and words like possible and stuff are incorporated into it so that we're not bound by certain things. I think the worst thing is to have, the worst issue for a city is to have a mandate from the state that requires us to meet certain standards.
Yes.
And then they don't fund that, and it becomes a burden upon the city to make, to meet these standards. So what the, so the flexibility that's adopted into this is to give the city the possibility of looking at things and working out our own solutions rather than have a set standard guideline put on us.
All right. I just want to say, you know, this is a great, this is a great thing for the city.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
All right.
Council President?
Sandy, and then Councilor Reyes, and then Councilor Toomey.
Thank you, Council President. I also am, I'm in great agreeance with this project. I just wanted to reiterate the fact and the need of the bicycle lane. Can we put a skateboard on there? When Ms. Parks came in front of us, I had spoken about this, though, because our teenagers and our kids do travel through the city, and they need an area to be able, I mean, everyone's always complaining, the kids are always on the road, the kids are always on the street, they're crossing where they shouldn't, and this is a way of transportation for them. Bicycles get stolen, they have to be left out and stuff like that. Skateboards and longboards are easier, they can be brought, say, like into a classroom, put into a corner, or brought into their lockers where they would be safe. So this mode of transportation is really important for them. The other piece that I absolutely love is when you mentioned flowers and bringing in the correct, you know, ambiance for the city. It's something that I have been saying since, like, day one that I got in here, that we needed to do those types of things. But the other things that we also need to do is, we have trees that will flower with flowers instead of, like, greenery, you know? That whole issue when they did it down there, Canal Street, it upset me that they put stuff up that looks like wheatgrass, you know, instead of putting things up that it's going to make it pretty. They put stuff over there that, number one, needs to be landscaped, it looks ugly because it does nothing for color, and three, I mean, it looks gray over there, gray and tan. It gives no color of any sort. The other thing that we need to look at also is, when we have these lights fixtures and stuff put into our city, we're not just putting them up. We don't need three light fixtures to tell us to go straight. That costs us money, and I believe it's like $250,000 per unit. I mean, we could, that money could be put to use somewhere else. The other thing also is, when we use trees and shrubberies to put into our ground, we need to make sure that these are not going to be the type that are going to go into our waterway system and ruin what we are creating, like the sidewalks and stuff like that. If you go around and you see the type of trees that we're putting in, we have to be mindful of what it's going to do in the long run for our city when they start to root into the ground and take hold of everything else that that ruins. I know that it has disrupted sewage, it has gone into people's water systems, the roots go in there, and then the water is not able to get out, flow out, and all that stuff. It costs the city money, and it costs the landlord's money, and a lot of them don't have the money to, you know, to do, and then we have to open up the streets and all of that stuff. So if we're mindful of what we're doing before we just put it in, instead of, yeah, that tree's going to grow good and just put it there because it costs us less. If it's going to cost us $15 or $20 for a tree that's going to provide better service and it's going to look better, maybe we should go that route. Cheapest way out isn't always... Cheapest way out isn't always the best way. But, yeah, I wanted to reiterate that thing about the kids and the skateboards. Once we start expanding from where this project is gonna take place into other areas, and the other thing too, are they, is, are there gonna be any capital grants or any grants that are gonna be given to us for the upkeep of these things? Like, are they gonna help us with the payment of, I don't know, the, the lights and stuff like that? Because the citizens of the City of Lawrence have to pick this up by paying taxes. We have to think about that. Because when we have to pay, who pays the light bill? We do. That's what I'm saying. So, are there gonna be any help, you know, for the upkeep, for the, DPW's gonna have to put other people out now to trim, and all of that stuff? Machinery for us to be able to do that? Those huge machines that you see that suck up all the grass? Instead of having somebody out there raking, you can have somebody out there blowing, and the other one with the big thing sucking all that stuff up, you know, to, it, it's, makes it easier, number one. Number two, it's, it's more efficient, you can put that into mulch, and you can re-put it out, instead of having that to be trash, that costs us to get rid of. We could reuse it, and recycle it, and put it right back in, into, into our city, which I think that would be a great idea. It saves us money on having to dump the stuff when we can reuse it. But there's a bunch of other stuff that I can think of, I know that this is gonna be a long night, and we've just started, and it's already, but I have a bunch of ideas that I know, Vilma is always very eloquent to, you know, all this kind of stuff, so I'll be getting in contact with you as to my other little ideas and stuff like that. But the kids need an area to be able to skate on. And I think that having the bike and the kids being able to use that also, we don't, I don't see a lot of bicycles, I see tons of skateboards. So, I think, you know, in it, that'll help in two ways, it'll keep them safe, it'll give them a way of travel, it'll let them know that they're being heard also. They're listening to us, they're giving us a safer way. You know, everybody likes to complain, but nobody likes to do anything about it, and I think implementing them in that idea would be a great outlet for them. Health, physically, safety-wise, in all different ways. All right, thank you.
Councilor Reyes?
He's gonna ask.
The one, okay. Mr. Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Councilor.
H before beauty?
[laughing]
Senator Rogers will be beautiful.
Go ahead.
Thank you anyways. Mr. McCarthy, in section implementation and minimum standards for streets, the city shall adopt the following minimum standards in the planning, designing, and construction of all new streets, sidewalks, and crosswalks. In Lawrence, I would say 99% of the streets are already in. The, the, I think, in order to build a new street, it's gonna be very, very rare. So, why do they say of all new streets and sidewalks? The first sentence?
In, in section A, sidewalks?
Section implementation and minimum standards for street?
Yes.
The introductions to what the minimum standards are. It says, "Designing construction of all new streets, sidewalks, and crosswalks." I, I think personally that...
I, I, I see what you're getting at, and, and we're gonna use it for, and, and it's gonna be used in every situation, reconstruction, new construction. The policy is gonna be, if you, if you look into some of the lower parts of the standards, it becomes very specific. When we design trash routes, when we do snowplow design, the complete streets policy's gonna come into all of that. So, it's, it's an, it's an overreaching policy, so I think it just says new streets there, but anytime, what, what we, we, what it doesn't mean is we're gonna go out and do every street over, and, and these standards starting tomorrow. So, whenever we go to do a street over, using our Chapter 90 money, the standards will then apply. But it's not a mandate for us to go out and fix every street using these standards now. It's, so, when we do, when we come to work on that street, on the Chapter 90, under the regular order, or if we get a special grant, these standards apply.
Stans Wolf, I have that.
Yep, that's, that's clear.
Now, is there anything within this, within this ordinance that you mentioned here in reference to, let's, first of all, it's gonna take a long time before all the streets are, surface. In the meantime, some of the streets are in deplorable conditions, a lot of times simply because of the fact that the utility companies, they come up and they don't follow what's, what's on the back end of their permit to put flowable fill in, when they, when they fill it up. And, so, is there anything within this ordinance that would cover that?
Is it gonna, excuse me?
Is there anything within this ordinance that you're looking for that would, that would stipulate to repair in these streets currently, prior to any, any new work that's being done on the street? In other words, if a utility company comes in, digs up the street, for whatever reason, and instead of following actually the, what's on the back of the permit for allowing them to do that, there's a statement in there that they have to use flowable fill, when they, when they backfill it, it solidifies somewhat similar to cement, and it won't settle in like, like, like others do without it over a period of time. So, is there anything within this ordinance that covers that?
I still, I'm, I...
You don't understand?
I can say that, just to remind you, this is just a policy. It's supposed to be a guide, it's not a one size fits all. It's like a roadmap for us to have certain standards and understanding of what are, what are the components that we're looking at when we're looking at complete streets. We are aiming, we're looking at this funding, because it is a way to sort of leverage on this policy, and sort of, sort of earn a reputation moving forward for other sources of funding coming down, because we're in line with what the Mass Department of Transportation wants us to do, which is the best practice. Best practice always brings money. Beyond that, it is just, every time there's a new project, it's not supposed to fund the project, it's supposed to just provide the guidance, and create a system where people are talking to one another, and continue to apply for funding as we have done so far. It's just gonna position us much better for future funding, so. Does that answer your question?
No, not really, but that's okay, thank you.
All right.
Councilor Reyes?
Thank you. I just wanted to thanks Vilma, I'm not gonna ask any question, don't worry. I know I heard very clear, this is only the beginning, you still have a long way to go. I know it's a lot of questions be, arise, but I just wanted, you know, just to express my, you know, how I feel, my grateful, I'm very grateful for all the time and all the people who has been involved in this project. I know, you know, this is something new for the city, this is something that, as we know, we all have to work together. But I think it's important for you to know that this is a great project, and, and I'm very happy to support this.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Is there is nobody else? Oh, Mr. Plant?
So, the motion here talks about waiting for the City Attorney to be able to opine on this, or give his review before it actually is adopted. Is that, am I understanding that, Mr. President, correctly?
Yeah, as the author of the motion, I would say that that's exactly it. We're, we're going to vote in favor and pending the...
Is this different than any other ordinance that we deal with? Is this unique? Is this different?
Different in terms of...
Does the City Attorney review every ordinance, or every proposed ordinance?
Yes.
He does. And when does he do it? Before we adopt it, or after we adopt it?
Mostly before, and we've had a situation this term where a similar thing occur, and people said, well, we'll, you know, we'll approve it, and then, I can't remember the exact item, but it was done before this term, in this term it was done before.
So, why is it, through you, Mr. President, why is it important that we have the City Attorney review it? If we're gonna support it right now, or, or pass it?
Why is it important? Are you gonna...
Sure.
It's my understanding that part of the City Attorney's duty is to review and approve all ordinances before they are approved by the City Council.
Yeah, my discussion with the City Attorney was that he's gonna approve it as to form.
Right.
Not the, not the content. So, if he's gonna comment, then it may be the numerical system, or how it fits into the ordinance body, not so much the subjective content of this.
So, I just want that to be clear, because one could get the impression that we are going to adopt something today, the City Attorney is going to change it around, and make some substantive changes, and it makes those of us who are taking votes in favor of this thing look like complete idiots, that we're supporting something, and then the City Attorney's then gonna say, yeah, it's a good idea, or it's a bad idea. So, I just wanna make sure that we're clear, that this is, that this, that form is that. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Also, as author of the, of the motion, I would like to, it, just interject here that I already saw this presentation, I already had the discussion, I was already made aware that the City Attorney was in favor, in fact, he was here that night, and he was in favor of this. So, again, it's as to form, and, you know, if we're gonna say this is our practice, then we have to follow. You know, so, our practice is that the City Attorney always, everything we do, contracts, whatever, approves as to form. So, that's, that's where I'm at. But again, I don't think, and you have it exactly right, that there's gonna be any, you know, substantive change.
Okay. Let me move on, we're a busy night, so I don't wanna take too much time, that, we can revisit this discussion later. You have a series of cities here, 25 of them, that's already, that's our, 25 cities?
Yes.
In this document, that have already began the process. Is there one city out of these 25 that you say, yeah, that's the kind of the roadmap that we're looking at, that we'd like to see in the City of Lawrence?
I, I reviewed several, included one, as I thought might have some like-minded ideas. There's a lot of the provisions in here, which are only, you can only find the Lawrence one. You know, a lot of these don't refer to garbage pickup or snow removal, most, I mean, most municipalities don't. A lot of them are much vaguer than ours. Lowell had a very specific one, I took some information from Lowell's, it was very instructive. Lowell was the only one that incorporated the Police Department into the policymaking, and said that the, the police had to enforce the laws, being mindful of complete streets, which means everybody's entitled to the use of the streets, and enforcement of laws are based upon that premise. So, it's not the cars on the streets anymore, as a lot of people think. That's, those type of ideas are all incorporated in there. So, like I said, we used, we went to several seminars, both Vilma, myself, and Alicia Miller from our office, on instructive parts of us. We also had the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission review it, and so...
By the way, the question is, so, out of all the...
Which cities?
You picked Lowell as the one city that you think?
Yeah, Salem was one.
Okay, so number two. Can I get Ms. Lawrence, real quick? And then I got, I don't wanna spend a lot of time, we've got a busy night.
So, this was modeled after Smart Growth America. Smart Growth America rates what are the best, based on certain components, as, excuse me, there has to be vision, mission, purpose, exceptions, I mean, there's a, there's a list, specific list of what we need to cover. Then we went to training with the Mass Emotion, a statewide training just on complete streets, and we were given copies of four. Out of those four, two or three had made the top 10 for rated Smart Growth. We followed those. And then in addition to that, we looked at Lowell's, we looked at Havrell's, and we have the Mass Municipal Association providing technical assistance, Mass Public Health Association providing technical assistance, and Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, who also reviewed it to make sure that we had hit all those components. Why is it important to hit the components? Because we need to score 80 or more, and those components have to be very strictly embedded in there. So, they're modeled based on the best practice.
All right, so, I got kind of the answer I'm looking for. But let me ask you a very tough question, and then we move on. You're obviously in favor of this. You said, everybody's been speaking, this is fantastic. I want you to give me one well-thought reason as to why you should not support this. Give me an opponent's position on this.
It could be viewed as something very, sort of a dream world, sort of something that out of context, something that it, it's untouchable, something that looks too perfect. But it takes visionary to understand why you have to start dreaming, and changing the status quo. And if the federal government, national, international, everyone is looking at this and saying, this is the best way to do work, and they're integrating the work into Chapter 90, into the work the Mass DOT is doing, into the work, the health and all policies. There's funding right now for Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, small grants, just do some workaround integrating health into their planning. So, this is the new era. Everybody's looking at this as, we're gonna have to start doing work together collaboratively, collectively, with everybody's input, and so, we need to jump on this wagon.
Mr. McCarthy, same question, real quick. What's the one big reservation that you would say, what's the, an opponent would say about this? Either this plan, this policy they're gonna adopt, and then what would come up?
I would take the opposite tact, and say, I can't think of one reason why anyone would not oppose it.
You gotta give me something, nothing's perfect.
From my, from my perspective, what, on my job requirements, it incorporates these standards into the zoning and planning board requirements, so that when we look at development now, these standards will be incorporated into that for all new construction of commercial developments, residential developments, subdivisions, these will be incorporated. So, that, to me, is a big thing that, that I like about it.
Okay, that's not my question, though.
Oh, what's the...
That's not my question. We're all, but if you can't answer, just tell me you can't answer, but it's gotta be something that, that's, I don't, my concern is that when everything is too good to be true, sometimes it's not true. And so, as a decision maker, we gotta look beyond everything that looks good, and it's gotta be something there that's, that, that we have, that should raise our, a question. Maybe it's the money portion of it, I don't know, maybe it's the fact that, that, that there's been no, this hasn't been here long enough. I mean, the oldest one that's been enacted, it's been 2004, in the city of, or the town of Northampton, I think, 2005. So, maybe this thing hasn't been really flushed out over the course of enough cycles in a city like Lawrence, so I don't know.
Yeah, some of the stuff, some of the cities cited there, like Cambridge, I forget what the date is on Cambridge, it's decades ago. Obviously, they weren't working on that, or something similar. I think they, somebody have taken liberties in saying how far ahead of the curve they were in this type of design work. But the, the policy's been mainly devised in the last five years, and it's only been incorporated within the last two or three, by the majority municipalities. If you're looking for a negative to it, yeah. We, we look at, I'm a, I'm a nuts and bolts type of guy. I looked at the stuff, and I say, how does it work? And, and, and there are also other people who are more on the theoretical side of it, and they, they look at the wishy-washy type of, oh, it's all a great policy, we'll just do it, we'll make it livable, that's it, let's call it livable. I, I, I think we incorporate all of that into this, because we had both sides. I don't like that, that kind of stuff, when you say, well, we wanna make, make livable streets. Well, that's an easy thing to say. Even the idea of complete streets, well, of course, as I said earlier, isn't that common sense? Shouldn't all street designs be complete? But apparently, it wasn't, because we haven't been designing completely. My criticism of this type of policy from the beginning was, it's not complete enough, because it doesn't take into consideration utility work, where utilities are placed, garbage pickup, when you have examinations. I put a very specific one in here, that's the only one I saw in any, in any municipality, that says, when anybody does any trench work in the city on a road, they have to go back and replace that to the standards set in this goal line. I don't think of any other community that has that, but I know that's a very specific problem in the city, because we have potholes and, and utilities that are left in awful shape, you know, several inches below the gray of the street. That's the type of stuff we wanna do, and so, if I had a, a criticism of it, it's not direct enough, that there is too much...
Then, Council President, I don't wanna take too much time, the one thing that caught my attention on this, real quick, in my last statement, is this. You had one picture on your, on your graph, the one picture that really struck me, was the one picture where you saw the telephone pole right in the middle of a sidewalk. And I'm thinking, how crazy is that? So, I mean, if you have, you're doing any kind of walking, it, it makes an impact right there. So, if we in the future can make something happen, that if people are coming for easements, or they're looking to move the telephone poles, even if something as simple as that, I think would be a win. If we can just do that by itself, would be a win, I think. That's a comment, not a question. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first one that I heard of complete streets, it was actually when I was visiting the City of Montreal in Canada. I was having a tour of the city, and luckily, I got to meet one of their city councilors there, and he started to talk about it. But it wasn't directed to me, the conversation, I was just, you know, listening over the shoulder. And it was very interesting, and when I came back from that trip, I attended the Mayor's Health Task Force, and the second person that mentioned it was Ms. Vilma Laura. So, when I heard that conversation, that was probably back in 2007, no, 2011, about 2011, when I first heard Vilma mention it, at the senior center. And when she said it, I was said, look, our city's on the right track. And I wanna thank Vilma for, you know, pushing this strongly, because I know it is the right thing to do today in the city. Is this project perfect? I will say, no, not at all. I think there will be a lot of room for improvements over the years. I think there will be a lot of room for improvements over the years. It is definitely a starting point for the city of Lawrence. It is not perfect today. Will we ever be perfect? I don't think so either. I think that there will continue to be room for improvements every day. And the reason for that is because every day, there's new technology, there's new modes of transportation. We know, we're familiar with, you know, the, the skaters. We had skaters here two years ago, you know, talking about how skating is a mode of transportation, not just recreation anymore. We're gonna have variety of things. I know if we remember the movies, Back to the Future, they said that actually flying skating will be the thing. Could that be coming up in the next couple of years? We do not know. And if that does happen, do we have to revisit this policy? We will. So I think it's, it's a step in the right direction. It is about finding creative and progressive ideas to do what's right for Lawrence and for all of our residents here. Now, I do have a question similar to Councilor LaPlante, in regards to the twenty-five communities that do have it in Massachusetts. Have any of those community, after implement, you know, implementing the policy of the ordinance at their city, have they not been able to implement it, or actually start it? Have they just been...
Not that I know of.
...no implementation?
I spoke with a couple of communities, I think both Methuen and Havrell were in the same process, that were, same steps that we are at. Salem, I think Redding Mass, a couple others, we met with them. They've, they've had it incorporated for a couple of years, and like I said, Salem's was much vaguer than ours, it's more ambiguous, it's more of just like a overreaching policy. I think ours is more specific in a lot of ways, addressed that. So I think the twenty-five cities, we try to take the best elements that we saw. I think it's also, the way we attacked this policy was from two different directions. Vilma, coming from the Mayor's Health Task Force, was working on the, on the, making the streets better for the residents in a, in a more holistic way, where my ordinance, my ordinance, kinda came from the DOT. DOT says, you've gotta adopt this stuff, and it's gotta be meaningful, and it's gotta be constructive. So we kinda used both those policies and met in the middle, which I, I think we got a symbiosis of the best elements of both, that we address the, how, how these policies will treat the neighborhoods, incorporate the streets into the neighborhoods. I mentioned earlier about the Park Street and Lawrence Street intersection project that you're, you're familiar with, that we've been working on. Lawrence Street, to a lot of people, was just a way of driving through that neighborhood, and we took into designing that project, incorporating what the needs of that neighborhood were, the businesses of that, that were there, and the, and the people that have to go to the, the medical facility. So all those ideas are incorporated into the design concept, rather than just have, you know, a couple guys go out with a lot of asphalt and just lay a street, and go through, which is the old way of doing it.
Now, changing a, a little bit the, the questions here. We have, in the presentation, when we look at the program framework, tier three, talks specifically about the funding of the projects. Are there any matching funds that will have to come from the city? You know, we could potentially receive for the first year, $750,000. Will there be any matching funds from the city of Lawrence?
I'm, I'm not sure of the details of it, there aren't. I think these are, these are, this is money. And, and what I like, we like about this in, in our offices, this is all what you call hard money, is for construction. And you get a lot of, there's a lot of grants out there for thinking and planning and ideas, but it's very rare that you get money for construction, putting, putting things in the street, and making a record, a visible change for the community.
All right, that answers my questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. McCarthy, you indicated that in your presentation, that thirty-three percent of the funding must be assigned to cities like ours, who have a low income average. Have you estimated how much money we will be receiving from, from this project?
I've never done that, because it's, it's, it's very difficult to do. Hopefully, we've done a great job, and really, you know, there's a possibility we did a bad job, and we'll get nothing. So that's always out there. You like to think the best. The money, the thirty-three percent, I think they refer to as mainly the gateway cities, but it's, it's a substantial amount.
Thirty-three percent was, was one of the conditions that they placed for this bond bill, this funding. Okay, we're gonna set aside this, you know, whatever, $12.5 million, and you're gonna distribute it over five years, but thirty-three percent of this funding needs to go to communities like ours. Those are the communities we most need. Now, is it gonna be competitive? Yes, it's gonna be competitive, because then you have a lot of communities that, that are eligible. But having a complete street policy, then that boils it down to what, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, whatever it is that we're gonna be, and so our chances are pretty good. But then, to answer, go back to Councilor Vazquez, previously, you have the city of Lexington, I believe, who's very wealthy, I mean, a community that's very wealthy. They do not have a complete street policy yet, they have been implementing complete street components for a long time. I think the city of Lawrence has been implementing complete street components all along, it's just that we have never done it in a way that is coordinated like this, and in a way that is systematic like this. And I think that, let's just talk about the reality, that we already doing some of this work. It's just naming it, calling it, and getting the right players at the table with the same vision, and sort of working from the same perspective.
Thank you.
I think the question, though, that goes back to more directly, I think if the maximum per year is $75,000, I think that's the maximum. Now, is that gonna construct a street or completely? No. But if we have the Chapter Ninety money to do, to do a street, we can then go through that street and put sidewalks and handicap ramps where we never could, or put other, or other infrastructure improvements to that project with the $75,000. It's a gap-filling type of expenditure. It's not gonna pay for all of our infrastructure by any means, but it helps.
So you, the maximum is $75,000 per year, for five years?
Per year, over five years, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Counselors, there is a motion on the floor.
Seven hundred fifty, seven, sorry, it's seven hundred fifty thousand, not seventy-five thousand.
Oh, okay, okay. Counselors, there's a motion on the floor, let me...
I got a quick question, only then he...
Just one quick question, please.
Thank you, Council President, through you. My question is this, so this project is only gonna encum, be encompassing of, of Merrimack Street?
What's that?
Or is this project gonna, so do we have at least a vision of where it's gonna start, and how we plan on developing it, is it to, where is it gonna go? Because are we, are we just gonna do like industrial areas, or are we gonna go into residential?
We, we, we work on a long-term transportation improvement projects that's gone through, we work with the state DOT, and we have a number of projects on our list. The state requires us to bring these up to certain standards, and we have to have plans and designs, the, the key word used to be twenty-five percent plans, before we can start implementing and getting the funding. So we have to be working with the city on these projects before that. We can't just come out and say, hey, we need this, street needs to be fixed, give us the money. We have to show that we've already been working towards this, that we have a plan to do this, and, and established history with the DOT. And as I said, we've got a number of projects to get earmarked through this, this, this program. There's also the Chapter Ninety money, which goes a long way. We can use this as, as, as a, as a stopgap, or make up for monies where the Chapter Ninety might be insufficient, and we could bring sidewalks up to code, where we might only have enough money for the streets at one level. Those are the kind of decisions that we can make with this flexibility and money. And, but we have to be clear to the city, there's very strict reporting guidelines, and, and we have to be responsible for that, we can't...
I understand that. I just, I mean, 'cause I know that we're trying to economic develop and all of this good stuff, but if we are trying to economically develop and use this money for areas, industrial areas or business areas, where we are tiffing people, and the citizens, the taxpayers of the city Lawrence are the ones that are picking up, footing the bill for, that, since this person is getting a tax incentive program, the residents of the city Lawrence are the ones footing the bill, but their industrial areas are the ones that are getting pretty, and what they're paying taxes for, which is to beautify their neighborhoods and to beautify their streets, doesn't get it done.
Maybe I can interject, but just to remind you about something on the slides. Remember that we're supposed to do a baseline inventory. You have to do baseline inventory, and there's guidelines for doing that. And that baseline inventory is gonna look at, look at pedestrians, and it's gonna look at all these, like, projects. And then after that, we need to prioritize what are the projects.
Okay.
And that prioritization, prioritization is gonna be based on specifics that I don't have right now. But the planning department has been going through trainings for this, for this particular thing, Chapter Ninety, all these changes. And so the, you saw that there's several points there, you have to name the location, the infrastructure, what it is, and then the group, there's gonna be a group that's gonna be sort of coming together of both community and, community members and planning department, to start making decisions around those things. And so there is a process and a system, it's not gonna be just, oh, this, this project seems to be the most appropriate, so we're gonna start there. No, it's gonna be based in priority, so that, that answers.
Yeah, it was just clarification to where the slides were, pictures of the slides being shown, and I, I just wanted to make sure, you know, that the citizens are picking up the, the bill, so, you know, why not beautify their areas instead of the areas where people are getting tipped and making all this money, and really not giving a kickback to the city, and their place is getting nice, and what the citizens of the city Lawrence are paying for is not. So that was just my question, thank you.
Okay, Counsel, there is a motion on the floor, and it had been properly second to approve pending the review by our city attorney.
Seconded.
It has already been seconded, so...
Oh, it's already been seconded, okay.
Yes. Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Well, we took quite a long time on this one item, and we still have quite a few to go. Mr. Clerk, Document 289-15.
Document 289-2015, notices hereby giving the City Council a hold of public hearing Tuesday, December 1st. City Council Chambers, 200 Carmen Street, at 7:00 PM. Purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a petition presented by and on behalf of National Grid of North Andover, Massachusetts, requesting the city of Lawrence by and through its council members to grant permission to excavate public ways and to run, maintain underground electric conduits, together with such sustaining protective fixtures as the company may deem necessary in the public way herein referenced on the plan provided by National Grid, dated October 8th, regarding Prospect Street.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
Notice will send to a list of abutters as provided by the assessors office.
Good evening, City Council. My name's James Kane, I'm an engineer with National Grid, and I'm here tonight to petition the town to install two four-inch conduits from pole 8867 across Prospect Street, approximately sixty feet, to Lawrence General Hospital's property to feed a new pad-mount transformer. This is to provide service to the new surgical building at 50 Prospect Street.
Is there any, anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to this? Will you please come forward? Please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Scott Bala, Maintenance Director for the Community Day Charter Schools here in Lawrence. My concerns, I'm not opposing the project by any means, my concerns is, are the fact that I got, we got six hundred kids up at 73 Prospect Street, right up on the hill across the street from where they're gonna be doing the work. I don't wanna lose the power with the kids in the building, I was wondering if we could work a deal out as far as scheduling it, possibly on a vacation week. We got heat, we got heat on the hill, which is radiant heat, it's a safety issue. How long would we lose the power for, if we lose the power at all, when you guys cut over?
I don't think we'll lose power at all.
Will you come, please come to the microphone?
No, this is just for the conduit to go on the street.
Sir, will you come to the microphone, please? No, approach.
I, I don't believe we'll be, you'll be losing power, this is for the conduit to come from the transformer to there.
Okay, so the primary lines are...
The primary lines.
They're not yet gonna be touched.
Well, we'll be tapping off the primary lines to feed the transformer.
Okay.
But they usually do that live.
Okay, all right, all right. That was my concern, I just didn't wanna...
Okay, thank you.
National Grid always tries to limit the, you know, the customers affected during an outage, and most things are done live.
Awesome, that's the best news I got, so, I think that answers the question.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor or against this document? If there is none, I'm gonna close our public participation. Counselor, what is your preference?
Second.
Motion had been made, and properly seconded to approve. Discussion, please. Discussion. Counselor Alvarez, Counselor LaPlante, and Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Counsel to me.
Yes.
Please...
Thank you, Council President, mine would be very quick.
Limit, limit, limit your conversations, please, because otherwise, we're gonna be here all night, okay?
No, mine would be very quick, it's the same questions I always make. Can we make certain that when you're working, that we not do it during rush hour, so that traffic can get back and forth, both in the morning and afternoon? Okay? That's the, the, my plea all the time. The second thing is, please make certain that after you excavate, that you then put, you know, fix it with quality material, making certain that it doesn't become a hole right away, 'cause that's been our experience, okay? And perhaps you can talk to our DPW director when you're doing that, so he could take a look. All right? Thank you.
Ms. LaPlante. So how many days will it take to do this work, through you, Mr. President?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but usually, it's done in one day.
Okay.
I think, you know, they'll excavate it, install the conduit, pour the concrete, and then backfill.
This might be helpful, just because the school's in that area, if you could do it on a day on some vacation week, for example, that you'll limit the impact. So you, if, through you, if you could work with the school and find out when that is, we're not gonna ma, I don't think we're gonna mandate it here, but it would be a good corporate citizen by doing that, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. The, there's gonna be, the contractor hires their own subcontractor to do the digging and installation of the conduit. So do they, they usually, you know, petition to the town to open up the roadway, I believe, right? So at that time, would they, would that be discussed with the...
I don't know, but, but, but I'm not gonna be there, and you're gonna, you're taking the lead on this. My suggestion through you is, is get the name of the contact of the individual that's here for the school, and just, and just connect notes, and then make sure if you can do it on a day that's on a vacation day, that would be helpful, just limits thing, and you can work with it, with the city on that. That's it, thanks.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes. I have a couple of questions for you, for you. You gonna, you guys gonna do a sock out on the street? Because it's been, it's been a concern to me, that every utility company that come to Lawrence, they treat Lawrence not as other community around. You guys are required by ordinance, as far as I know, that to do the proper sock out. Usually, that doesn't happen. Okay. Also, the full depth of the pavement, existing full depth gotta be replaced the same way, meaning if we have four, six, or eight inches of asphalt, we have to have it back and properly compact it by lift of two inches at least. Those are technical questions that I'm, that I'm, that I'm putting up there, because it's been a joke so far, with many utility companies coming out here to do work, and I'm, I'm here, I'm new, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow up on that all the time, because that's my concern big time. Another thing that I would like you to, you guys to, to do, you guys gonna pay for police detail, on a summer, right?
Yes.
So that means that you guys are gonna follow the Mass DOT guidelines for TMPs, Traffic Management Plans, right?
Yep.
That means that you guys are not gonna do any detours on the street, right?
I'm not sure about...
Well, you gotta make sure about that.
Okay.
Because, I mean, Prospect, Prospect Street, it's a very busy area, and if we just shut down the, the whole thing, it's gonna be a traffic impacting the whole city.
Okay.
Not only that, that section that you guys are concerned, it's gonna impact the whole, the entire community, including the hospital, including the, the charter school, including many other important, important part of the community as well. The time that you guys gonna start, that's important, because the school is gonna start, at what time do you start, by the way?
It did drop at six thirty in the morning, I mean, seven, between six thirty and quarter, maybe.
So by eight, you guys are not doing drop off?
Yeah, a lot did bust a roll on out of there.
Okay, so that means that if you guys gonna do the project right in front of the school, the school is the priority, otherwise, you guys are gonna have to do night work, which is fine, too. I'm pretty sure that you guys are gonna finish it up by, by within eight hours period. I'm pretty sure that you guys gonna finish it up by, by within eight hours period. But no detours, meaning that you guys gonna have to maintain one, one, one lane traffic at all the time, if you're gonna follow the standard CMPs from MASTYOT, which is adopted by the city. Proper sock out, full depth payment, compacted properly, because, and then eventually, once you guys leave, we deal with the pothole.
Yep.
So the proper computation gotta be there all the time, not just dumping the asphalt and just leave, you know? Doing it in two different sections, meaning one traffic, one traffic in each dire-- one, one lane of traffic each direction at all the time open. You guys are responsible for that.
Okay. Yeah, I'll bring that up, that coordination with, you know, the surrounding, you know.
So those are my concerns. You guys gonna be digging about 60 feet of, 60 linear feet of, of conduit.
Yep.
It's gonna be like around, like around 20 feet of conduit going from one section of this, of the sidewalk to the other section of the sidewalk.
It's gonna go from the pole across the street onto?
Across the street, yeah.
Yep.
Make sure of all those requirements. That's gonna, that's have to be, that gotta be done properly.
Yep.
Otherwise, we're gonna have to deal with the issues eventually, and I'm, I'm telling you, this is, this is not a joke anymore. We gotta follow those, we gotta follow up, and I personally gonna go up there to make sure that it's been done right. And the second time that you guys come over to ask for permission, I gonna, I gonna come, I gonna count that you guys did it properly now. Okay?
Okay. Alright.
Mr. Toomey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm gonna piggyback off of Counselor, Counselor, oh, excuse me, Counselor Rodriguez's initial statement about when you dig it up and you put it back, put it back properly. I believe on the back of the permit that you get to be able to dig a hole there, it spells it out on the back exactly what you have to do. And one of the things that is on that permit is what they call flowable fill. Have you ever heard the term?
Uh, I've heard of it, yep.
And it, it spells it out that, that that has to be put into the hole prior to putting hot top on top of it, because it solidifies almost like cement.
Yep.
Yep, and it won't sink. So if you follow the procedure, there's no problem, but if you don't, there's gonna be a problem. So what kind of reassurance do we have that you're gonna, you say you hire an outside contractor?
Um, yes.
Who oversees him?
Um, we have a trench inspector from National Grid that.
Say that again?
We have a trench inspector who oversees the work for National Grid.
Okay, would you make sure that he knows about that?
Yeah, I will.
If he's read the permit, it's right in the back of it, it spells out.
We have a, usually a trench sketch that goes along to the inspector, so I'll, maybe I'll add these notes, you know, to, to it, that, these specific notes that you guys have brought to me. And that way, that way they'll be available to him when he has the blueprint.
Please do, thank you.
Counselor, we do have field supervisor in the DPW department that is supposed to be overseeing all these things.
Mm-hmm.
And what happens is that actually there is a failure on the part of our department to, to, to supervise properly.
Right.
And to follow up. And what we need to do, actually, is not ask whether the company is going to do or follow anything, but we need to ask our department, our DPW department, to really follow through and after a certain time revisit the work that has been done and make sure that before the year ends, that, that things are done properly. So I, I think that somehow we need to communicate that to the field supervisor in the DPW department.
I agree with you. We need to oversee as a city. We need to oversee.
Definitely.
It's not them, they come to request, go ahead, mister, miss, go ahead.
No, did you give her the floor?
No, 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 it's okay.
He gave you the floor.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, you could take it.
No, no, what I'm, no, what I'm saying is that we, as a city, we need to oversee it. They come and request permission, but we are the one have to be responsible. And whenever they finish, they have, we have to kinda go and approve it, or just make them to, to come back if they need to.
Of course.
Yeah. Council President, I would like to act in a friendly manner to the author of the motion if, if she would include writing to DPW and requesting the two things.
And I second the motion.
One, to be there when it happens.
Yes.
And second, to go back and re, and.
Yes, and I second the motion.
And check. Well, we don't need one, because she's accepting it, right?
No, she made it, but I second it.
I know, but I'm saying that I don't need to make a motion, because she's accepting it.
Are you accepting the amendment or change?
I would also like to add to that, that we're gonna be looking into the, not just the responsibility for Prospect Street conduit, we're gonna be looking for the same responsibility throughout.
Across the city.
So we're gonna be letting DPW know that we need them to be working closely with National Grid, Bay State Gas, or whichever other utility companies come into our city to dig anything up, so it will not be exclusive just to you. And I'm sorry that you had to be like the example here this evening, but we have just concerns and just a bunch of things that haven't been happening the way that they should here in the city, and we're just trying to grab those reins. I mean, it's nothing against you or your other company, it's just a co-op, collaboration of all the utility companies not coming through, not supervising their jobs properly. And then on our end, I'm sure that it's gonna be, you know, said things like shorthandedness and X, Y, Z as to the reasons why, but if both, both the utility companies and the City of Lawrence was to get together, then it's not just one person to on the project. Now we might have three. So we might have to one your side and one on ours, instead of just one on ours, trying to do everything. So it would be a lot easier and feasible to get together.
Counselor Montes, do you accept the amendment to your motion?
I do, I do.
Okay, good. If there's no further discussion, let's move forward.
Just to finish up, again, I just want to reiterate that it's not, you haven't been picked on. What occurs is that we've had this discussion.
No, I understand.
With other utility companies, including yours, and, and there has been always failure to, you know, to do the upkeep that we're requesting. And then we get beat up, because people are saying, "We just had this street paved and, you know, look at this now," and, you know, "The potholes, they're driving us crazy." And we're the ones who are getting these phone calls, and, you know, people are not crazy, they're act, it's actually happening. Okay? Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Okay, let's take a vote. Motion had been made and properly seconded with the amendment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Council President?
Yes.
Can we take Document 306-15 before, or out of order, I should say, before 293?
There's a motion to take Document 306-15 out of order. It's already seconded. Motion has been made and properly seconded. In favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, Document 306-15.
Thank you.
You have it.
Thank you.
Just make sure about while we talk.
Have a good evening.
Document 306, Council President, that matter is actually two public hearings within one. One is a proposed easement, the other is a petition to excavate the streets that are associated with the proposed easement. Just as brief history on this matter, on 11/17, the council ordered to approve pending contingent upon the city attorney drafting the easement and a second condition pending this public hearing. Public hearing being proposed on the petition to excavate. Document 306-2015, notice here by giving the City Council a hold of public hearing Tuesday, December 1st, 2015. City Council Chambers, 200 Carmen Street at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a petition presented by and on behalf of Bay State Gas Company doing business as Columbia Gas Company of Massachusetts, Massachusetts Corporation with offices in Westboro, Massachusetts, presented to the City Council for permission to excavate the public ways and to run and maintain all necessary gas facility, material, and equipment, together with such sustaining protective fixtures as the company may deem necessary on the public way, a ways known as the location of 261 Methuen Street, Lawrence, Mass, service 612 Hampshire Street and other areas along that way, in order to provide sustaining gas utility service to buildings at and near those locations, further described in a plan entitled Proposed Easement Exhibit A. Copy of the proposed easement, location of the excavation, and this notice will provide to a list of abutters as provided by the Assessors Office. Wish to go into the second portion of the, of the easement?
Yes, will you please?
The public hearing was also ordered, an easement drafted by the city attorney. If I can have a second. Notice was provided by publication in newsprint media, hearing on November 22nd. Notice here by giving the City Council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, December 1st, in City Council Chambers at 7:00 PM, to gather testimony, information, public input concerning a proposed grant of an easement from the City of Lawrence, Mass. to the Bay State Gas Company doing business as Columbia Gas, citing the exclusive and providing a meets and bounds description of the easement, the proposed easement, citing a tax map 145, Lot 50, at 261 Methuen Street. Prepared and submitted by Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors on behalf of Bay State Gas Company, said easement is for the purpose of entry, installing, repairing, replacing, maintaining, extending, altering, operating, inspecting, patrolling, and removing any gas facilities which benefit from the grant of the easement from the City of Lawrence, including existing and future occurring vegetation and structures which interfere with the operation of the facilities. The proposed easement was drafted by the city attorney and published in full on the city website in a summary provided on, again, November 22nd in newsprint media for this public hearing.
Before Bay State Gas speaks, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on behalf or against this, this item on the agenda? If there is none, why don't you go ahead and give us briefly a summary?
Good evening, Counselors. I'm Vinnie Luciano from Columbia Gas Construction Specialist in Lake It States there. I'm here and representing the easement onto the city property for the purpose of bringing a gas service to 6-12 Hampshire Street.
Counselors, since this has already been approved, all we need to do is to take a vote.
Right.
To confirm the previous vote that we took to approve.
Okay.
Okay, if you want to get into discussion on this, by all means, we could do that. I would like to enter to the motion first to confirm the vote.
I move.
That we took on, on November.
Second.
Okay, so motion had been made to confirm the vote, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, and I have a, a quick question. Can we, can we add to this motion dissent then, as we add to the previous one, to have the DPW personnel to go inspect the trench and all the stuff?
By all means.
Sure, I accept that.
Yes, by all means, okay.
All right, discussion as well. The first vote is for an affirmation of the previous vote from two weeks ago, and that vote was to approve the easement?
Yes.
And the second vote we're gonna take tonight is gonna do what?
Accept this ordinance written by the.
The easement and the work to be done.
And the work that we're gonna be done.
I believe that the vote that we took was on both.
Right.
Am I correct?
That's correct. Affirming, affirming the vote would essentially affirm the easement and the work and the petition to excavate.
Okay.
I, I have just one question, and do we know for a fact that the, the property owners that are gonna be the beneficiaries of this easement, if they're current on their taxes?
Uh, I believe that any permit that is issued, is issued based on the fact that they have already. They have to get signature from the tax department, water department, et cetera, et cetera. So any, any, any issue of a permit cannot be issued unless.
Right.
Those departments signs, sign off.
Has been signed.
I'd like to make a stipulation to this, to this motion, that, that we, in fact, are insured that all taxes are paid up on the, on the, for the beneficiary of the property, the owners of 612 Hampshire Street.
The stipulation, Ms. LaPlante, may not, may not be necessary due to the fact that on a daily basis, anyone who comes for a permit must get a signature from the tax department, from the water department, and from the inspection and service department. They must before they are issued a permit.
And if I may, if I may, Council President, we have gotten some complaints, because we also put together an ordinance that, that this council body, which ends in, in December, voted to make certain that everybody's up to date with their taxes and that no license should be given unless they're up to date with their taxes. And that was true also of people who want to run their business, but they're renting from somebody, if the, if the landlord is not, how is it up to date with their taxes, we won't even grant the, the tenant the license.
Could I call very quickly the, the hour slate? Mr. Iannello is here this evening, and he oversees the tax office. May I ask him just to come up? And he's unprepared for this, I don't think, I didn't give him any warning this is coming up, so.
And the assessor's here, he could look it up quick.
So I'm not sure the assessor can find that out real quick, but we just heard, hopefully heard the discussion being, of course, that, that we wanna make sure that, that if an easement is granted, that the property was of 612 are up to date on their taxes. And the Council President, I believe rightly says that there is no, that there's communication between your department.
Yep.
And the department that issues these permits, and I need to make sure that's in fact happening.
The, whoever's issuing a permit, the department who issues the permit, they all know enough to check with the, send the applicant down to the treasurer's office to get a, collector's office to get a sign off to make sure their taxes are paid. So whoever's issuing this permit, I assume is the building department, they will issue the permit after the applicant comes back from the collector's office that everything's all paid. We've been pretty good about that in the last, you know, several months.
And my, and so I just wanna make sure, so I'm, I'm gonna, if you don't mind, through you, just highlight that to make sure that, that takes place in this one. And also, do we know that, you won't have an answer to this, Mr. Iannello, but do we know what potential use of that property is going to be after the easement is granted? Do we know what they're looking to do there?
I'm sorry.
Do, do we know, through you, do we know what the applicant is looking to, to do at that, at that?
No, I don't, I don't know.
Do you?
Hold on, hold on.
Just curious.
I'm, I'm just here for the easement.
Okay.
The applicant's here.
Council President, if I may.
Are you, hold on, are you finished?
If she's gonna, if the, if the council vice president has an answer, I'm, I'm gonna listen.
I have an answer, yes.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
The, when the owner was here, and he was here twice for the ordinance committee.
Yep.
Um, he made clear that he is putting up a business, which is a pharmacy.
Yes.
Both of his sisters have pharmacists and licensed and have worked for Walgreens, CVS, and other pharmacies, and now they're doing a family pharmacy practice. And the brother's not a pharmacist, but he's good with his hands, he's good with construction, so he's doing that part of the work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, I was gonna answer that, because he did, like you say, twice.
Okay. Let's take, again, an affirmative vote on, on something that we have already approved, okay? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. You also made, uh, thank you, you also.
Thank you, Counselors.
You also made a motion about 287.
Yes, can I take, can I take Document 287-15 out of order?
Motion has been made to take Document 287-15 out of order, and it has been properly seconded. In favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Madam Chair of the Audience Committee, will you report on that, please?
Document 287-15 is a transfer rental license, is gonna be located 2 Red Road Street. It has been put on the agenda by Blast Martine, and I just wanna give an answer to Counselor Alvarez. Remember that I told you that I was gonna pass by and check the area where he's gonna be parking?
Right.
And he was right. It's no house, is exactly where you say there was located, and it's no house in front of the, the house, so it's kinda commercial, so he's safe. So I'm looking for motion.
But he's gonna move it every two hours.
Yes, he's aware of that.
But we told him.
So I'm looking for motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve Document 287-15. It has been properly seconded, discussion?
No, she, I made the motion.
Yeah, and she's seconded.
And she's seconded, okay. And she's seconded, okay.
First motion was, through you, Mr. President, was simply to take it out of order.
Oh, you're absolutely right.
Did we vote, we did vote.
We voted.
Now it's the second motion.
She's making the motion to approve.
Right.
Has been properly seconded. Without further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Let's go back to the auto business to document 293 15, Mr. Clerk.
Document 293, 2015. Notice hereby given the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 1st, 2015, in city council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed, a proposed approval of a split tax rate which shifts tax burden between residential open space properties and commercial, industrial, and personal property classes for FY 2016. In order to establish the residential and commercial tax rate for the city of Lawrence, Lawrence, Massachusetts, interested taxpayers were encouraged to present information by appearing at this public hearing, provide written comments or information to be submitted on this matter, to be forwarded, and encourage the forward written comments to the officer of city clerk at the address in city hall as published in the notice, the notice was published in two publications appearing, one on November 24th, 2015, and the other appearing on November 22nd, 2015.
Is there anybody in the audience, well, actually, we have a presentation first. Am I correct? Alex? Yes, will you please come forward? After the presentation, I'm going to allow public participation. Yes, will you, can you please pass me one? Sandy?
Why is that, Alex?
No more papers.
Hey, Alex. November 9th one, it's the same one? The one that you had passing out, November 9th, that's the same one? Everything else is the same?
Give me one for the file. At some point, I'm sure Alex will give me one. Get it after the hearing.
I have mine. I think, do you need one? Because I have my.
Yeah, I don't need one. I think I took it home.
You all set?
I may have taken it home, you didn't make any changes, did you?
Locked.
Oh, but what was wrong with mine was that it was.
Security works.
That it was black and white and it didn't have the, a mouse.
Good evening, councilors. Lexie Vega, Chief Tax Assessor for the city of Lawrence, resides at 14 Cornish Road. This evening, we're here to present the 2016 tax classification hearing. Our objective tonight is to, is for the councilors to vote on a tax factor so that we commit, submit the tax recap to the state and finalize our tax rate so that we can send out our tax bills on January 1st. There is about 110 communities that are going through the same process as we speak, or in the next week or so. Again, each year, we go through the same process. Communities that actually shift the tax burden to commercial, industrial, and personal property must decide on a tax factor. If a community chooses not to adopt the factor, they just simply choose a factor of one, which is a single tax rate, since the city, since the state adopted a tax classification or split rate, the city of Lawrence has adopted a factor each year. And last year, last two years, we adopted a factor of 171, which resulted in shifting the tax burden to the commercial, industrial, and personal property side. Without this shift, the, the residential taxpayers will receive the, the highest burden. The valuation percentage as we speak is 78%. By adopting a factor of 171, it would be reduced to 62%, and the commercial, industrial, personal property will go from 22% to 38%. And the FY 16 tax levy amount will increase by 5% from last year to 62 million. The assessment, the approach to value that must be considered when determining value for fiscal year 16 is as of January 1st, 2015, which means that assessors are required to use calendar year 2014 sales. As, as a result of this, we saw an increase in the city of Lawrence of 2.5% from last year's total taxable valuation. The residential value has increased by 2.8%, and the commercial, industrial pretty much stayed, stayed the same. So there was no change there, and no need to shift the valuations. The average single-family tax bill for 2016 increased by $2,300 to $180,000. The three approaches to value with determining assessments is similar to appraisers, we use the sales comparison approach, whether willing buyer, willing seller, under no compulsion to buy or sell, and some understanding of the real estate market is willing to pay, and we would use that sale and compare it to your property. So at the end of the day, is, the homeowner is actually determining, dictating the valuation, and the assessors are just following suit. The cost approach is used for specialty buildings, actually, no, it's, it's actually used to replace the building, less depreciation plus the improvement, plus the land, I'm sorry. The income approach is basically used for retail, commercial, apartment buildings, and the income is taken into consideration, the data is analyzed, and we give discounts to, for vacancy and expenses to arrive at a income approach to valuation. The terms used during the budget season is the levy, what is the levy, what is the levy limit, and proposition two and a half, and how it affects your budget each year. The levy is the amount of money raised through taxation. The levy is determined, was determined in June, when you determine the budget. The levy limit is actually the maximum amount you can raise each year by proposition two and a half. Proposition two and a half is used in order for a basis so that we can determine exactly how much the maximum you can raise each year. As you know, this year, we're not, we're not going all the way to the full levy limit, we're actually, last year, we had chose not to use proposition two and a half, and that's still on the table for FY 16. What's also considered when determining the levy amount is new growth. New growth is the amount of money that's additional through improvements, we find, we discover those improvements through the building inspector's office from permits that are issued throughout the year. And again, we're using 2014, calendar year 2014, building permits, any new personal property accounts, any existing accounts, personal property accounts that purchase new equipment, those are reported through forms of list, and the city was certified the first week in November at the new growth amount of $1.6 million, and that is a very, a very healthy sign for the city. This, page six is the, called the LA4, it's a form that we submit to the state. As you can see, it describes every property class from single families to two families to commercial, industrial, and personal property. As you can see, the first line is 4,258 single-family homes assessed for $766 million, and that's the largest class of properties in the city of Lawrence. The total valuation on the bottom right-hand corner is $3.1 billion, again, reaching $3 billion for the second year in a row, and we see that trending moving forward to fiscal year 2017. Page seven is a comparison over the last three years, and you can see the trending throughout all property classes, and again, the city's rebounding, it's, it's very healthy, and this is a good sign, increasing our tax base and, in the city of Lawrence. If the city were not to adopt a tax factor, this is what's going to happen. Fiscal year 2016, you basically take your numerator, which is the city's levy, $62 million, and your denominator, which is the city's total valuation of $3.1 billion, you divide it to, and you come up with a single tax rate of $19.51. That would be multiplied by your assessment, and as you can see in the graph in the bottom, that's where the tax burden is going to be shifted to. 78% of the taxpayers are residential, they're going to be hit with the biggest tax burden in the history of the city of Lawrence, so that's why we have this tax classification, we're not raising additional monies, all we're doing is shifting the tax burden to the commercial, industrial, and personal property side. Page nine is the history of the tax shift over the years since 2002. As you can see, we've shifted the tax burden to the maximum allowed at 1.75. In years, fiscal year 2005, residential properties increased much faster than the commercial, industrial properties, and for five straight years, the state allowed us to go above and beyond the 1.75, and rewrote the legislation to that 2009 to bring it back to cap it at 1.75. But in the last couple of years, we've allowed some sort of shift to the, to the commercial, industrial, personal property, we didn't shift it all the way, so I left the last one blank because we haven't decided that one yet. But as you can see, the last, with a single rate, it was 1951, and a split rate brings you the residential down to $15.12. The tax levy base, this is where our growth is coming from, residential new growth is $408,000, again, that's through permits. We actually had one, two 121A affordable housing units come onto the tax roll for fiscal year 2016. There was a 40-year agreement, and they since expired and never renewed with the state, so now they're on the tax roll 100%, and that's a great sign. Personal property growth is our biggest class that always bringing in the most monies, and again, those are the telecommunications and valuation certified by the Department of Revenue. So again, as you can see, for the last six years, the new growth has been over a million dollars, and that, I believe that trending is going to still hold for the next coming years. The tax levy, this is the sheet that, you know, we present to the budget and finance director and the mayor when producing the budget, we basically use a basis of last year. As you can see, FY 2015 levy limit was 60,555,260, that's our base when starting our fiscal year 2016 budget. Proposition two and a half allows you to raise an additional $1.5 million plus new growth, which was certified at $1.6 million. Total maximum allowable to raise for FY 16 is $63,711,000, that's what the state allows you to raise. In essence, we're only raising 62,275,000, leaving an excess levy capacity of $1.46 million in FY 16, and again, that was carried from the two propositions two and a half last year of $1.4 million. Every other year, we raised all the way to the levy limit. The average single-family home tax bill for the last 15 years here, or 13 years, as you can see, it continually increases, and so does the valuation, so I just wanted to show you folks this slide, so you can see what's happening to the single-family homeowners in the city of Lawrence. Page 14 is a snapshot of the next five pages, it's easier for me to read, but if you look at, and the other slides depict every class by itself, but shifting the tax burden at 1.69, will ultimately give some relief to the commercial, industrial, and personal property, but shift a portion of that burden over to the residential side. So the higher you shift the tax burden, which is the maximum of 1.75, that's when a homeowner is going to see the best bang for their buck, and the commercial, industrial, personal property will see the biggest tax burden.
I'm sorry, could you, Alex?
Yep.
Repeat that, I can hardly, I could hardly hear that last part.
The shift of 1.75.
Yep.
Is the maximum allowable amount according to the Department of Revenue. So by choosing a factor of 1.75, the residential homeowners will see the, the lowest burden. Yes, $85, but each slide after this will, will explain it a little bit more. So this is the, a slide, a factor of 169 increases the residential tax rate to $61, which would be the maximum, and the commercial, industrial will see an increase in the tax rate of 54 cents, I'm sorry, 54 cents and $61 respectively. The biggest tax bill that the homeowner, the worst-case scenario for a single-family homeowner is that you adopt this factor and the tax bill will increase $144.58. The commercial property owner and the industrial will see slightly higher increase of 161, and industrial will see an increase of 583. And each slide after this will see a shift reducing the single-family home and increasing the commercial. So in this slide, you see that the, now the bill for the single-family homeowner went down 10 bucks, and the commercial, industrial went up $207, or the industrial, I'm sorry, went up $200. This is what we're voting on this evening. Factor of 171 was adopted in the last two years, if you choose this factor, a single-family homeowner would see a $124 increase, and the industrial will see an additional $200 every time we click this button and increase the factor. No need to, so I'll just shift all the way to the 175. This is the best-case scenario for the single-family homeowner, and worst-case scenario for the commercial and industrial. This graph shows you the, the average single-family home compared to the average commercial tax bill, and that's where we're shifting this burden. Last slide is basically a comparison of the surrounding communities and of Methuen, Haverhill, Lowell, Lynn, and similar types of cities like Holyoke, Springfield, and their average tax bill in FY 2015. I believe only one community so far has set their tax rate, which is Haverhill. I'm not sure if it's certified yet, so I didn't use their numbers for this year, but I believe they adopted the same shift as they did last year. So again, this is the last step before we submit the numbers to the state for certification and issuing of the tax bill, third quarter tax bill. And if the package is, is online, if anyone has any questions, you can contact the assessor's office at 978-620-3190.
Is anyone in the audience, I'm gonna recognize, please identify yourself as usual.
My name is Will Carpenter. I'm Vice President for the American Valley Chamber of Commerce and very simply, President Maldonado and members of the council. Very simply, I'd like to recap key points expressed in a memo sent to President Maldonado by Chamber President Joe Bevalacqua and the chamber is headquartered right here on Essex Street in Lawrence. Thank you. Obviously, it's on the topic of tax classification. On behalf of the nearly 400 businesses in Lawrence that are members of the Chamber of Commerce, we respectfully submit that property taxes continue to remain one of the addressable costs of doing business in the city of Lawrence. The ever-rising cost of doing business, making payroll, making lease or mortgage payments, this impacts nearly all businesses, small, mid, and large. As such, the reduction of property taxes serves to assist these businesses to remain viable, keeping literally thousands of Laurentians employed. Again, I stress, the reduction of property taxes to business and industry assists these companies to remain viable, helping to keep li- literally thousands of Laurentians employed. Finally, in closing, we believe the property tax cost is an area where a reduction can and will assist businesses in remaining competitive and assist their continued operation to remain in the city of Lawrence. In recognition of these and other related factors, the chamber respectfully requests that the city of Lawrence reduce the business and industry tax classification rate. Thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you.
Yes, come forward.
I'll show you how smart I am, all right? My name is Francis Alack, I live at 245 Broadway. Here's the problem, it's the airport. Fifteen years ago, Lawrence gave away to not the end of it, the airport. Well, they get, Lawrence gets 4 million dollars every year from the airport. I wanna know, on this classification, what is the assessed value of the airport, which is located in not the end of it? I know they get 4 million a year, they gave away 4 million, that's 8 million, what's the assessed value of the airport? That's very important, cuz the tax, if, if you sell, like, I know Mayor Rivera's committed for two years, but taxpayers can't afford to go up, 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 and up. Where are you gonna get the money? Where are you gonna get the money for all the things you need? The fire stations, the police station, and everything. I wouldn't wanna be in your shoes, I wouldn't want your job. Where are you gonna get the money? You tell me, I'll tell you right now, it's the airport down the road, you're gonna have to sell it because you have so many problems. What is the assessed value of the airport? I have a right to know, you have a right to know. Can I find that out? What is our share of the airport?
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak?
Good evening again, my name's still Dick Russell, still live at 34 Cross Street. The first gentleman I see walked and talked, he talked a nice line for the Chamber of Commerce. Nobody, there's nobody that represents us, Chamber of Citizens, other than you people, okay? I keep beating on a dead horse. His, I know I've talked to Mr. Vega about the pilot program, he said it's not in his job description. Why isn't it? Every penny that you get in revenue lowers the tax levy, if I'm not mistaken. Why isn't this stuff investigated? Why? Okay, Frank mentioned the airport, I'll throw out another option. Why don't we unload the parking garages, sell them, sell the parking lots, get them back on the tax roll, get income coming in? Oh, and we'd also eliminate the possibility, any, any corruption, our money walking out the door. Let that be somebody else's worry. I got questions, I get no answers. Like I said, you people are the Chamber of Citizens, help us. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience? I'm going to close participation, poll participation, councilors, what is your preference?
Motion to approve, question?
Motion to approve what?
Motion at 1.75.
1.75? There's a motion to approve 1.75, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion had to be made and properly second, discussion?
Discussion. Thank you, Council President, through you. My decision for going straight up to 175 is, is simple. I have been a strong advocate against a lot of the businesses getting tiffed for tons and tons of years and the citizens, the residents of the city of Lawrence who are homeowners having to foot the bill. That's number one. Taxes weren't raised last year, but your property values were. So wasn't your mortgage and so wasn't your insurance. There's a lot of homeowners, especially in my district, that's a predominantly residential neighborhood, I hardly have more than two families, I hardly have any triple-deckers in my, in my district. I have a lot of senior citizens who own their home and they don't have a mortgage, but they have an insurance and they have taxes to pay. So when their assessed property value went up, now their social security check doesn't cover all the, all these new, like, the taxes are gonna go up, their property value went up, so their insurance went up, and they don't have the funds to be able to support this increase. So what ends up happening is then, they end up losing their homes. They end up going into retirement homes and nursing homes and, and then, these homes, some of them get abandoned, some of them get foreclosed on, and then we have the sharks that are waiting, these corporations and these LLCs that are waiting in the background to come and take them over. And that is called what? Economic development, I think they mention it being called? That's where I'm getting to. Huh? Who is getting the benefit? It's not the residents of the city of Lawrence. Who's reaping the benefit? Not the poor residents of the city of Lawrence, the blindfold needs to come off. You don't say, "I'm not gonna raise taxes and raise your property value" and then try to double-do you, which is what they're trying to do now. Therefore, that's my reason for doing the 1.75. We need to stand like Mr. Russell said, the advocates of, of the residents of the city of Lawrence is us. And I just, I keep, I keep saying it and I keep saying it and, and that whole tiff thing that I was called an idiot for when I tried to talk about the loophole that's in there, that there is no, nothing in the regulating saying that if you do not comply with that tiff, that you have to give us back our money, the tax incentive money that was given to you. But I was called an idiot by one of my fellow councilors, that then he had to excuse himself. But if I'm such an idiot, if I'm such an idiot and you sit on the, you're the chair of the Budget and Finance and you couldn't see it, be pointing the finger somewhere else, right? Going furthermore with that, we really need to take a look at how things affect the residents of the city of Lawrence being in the way of not thinking so much in economically developing pockets or whatever pocket or the city of Lawrence or whatever, taking care of the residents of the city of Lawrence. Like they said, we have 25% of, of, what, 20% elderly people that live here in the city, how many own the homes, how many will lose their homes because of the decisions that are made here? Will people wanna do this because they're doing this for themselves, you know? It's not right. And then, like I said, you know, and I've said it before, my mouth gets me in trouble lots of times, don't care, that's why I'm here, God voted in again, here I am, saying it loud and clear. And I will continue to back you guys up. And that's the reason why I'm doing the 1.75, because I believe that if the money should come from, from somewhere, it should come from the companies that are not paying the taxes. The industrial people who got 10 years of XYZ, now they're getting their streets done, now they're getting this grand and all these beautiful things are going their way, when they're not paying tax, then they, they got a tax incentive from the city. And then the residents who are paying for this are not getting the new streets, they're not the ones that, no, they're the ones who foot the bill, but they're not the ones that are getting the streets, they're not the ones who are getting the nice neighborhoods. No. Economically developing what pocket? Not the city of Lawrence. And I repeat it again, I said it for the Eagle Tribune, and I will repeat it again, we're here to protect the city, from the first floor to the third. Get it moving. Thank you.
Is there anybody else, Mr. Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I do have several questions. I've gone through the, this tax classification presentation earlier and I'd like Mr. Vega to, he would help me out with it. For instance, on page two, it says here that municipalities in the second, third paragraph, municipalities that are certified by DORs are, as assessing property of full and fair cash value may elect it to shift the tax burden among the major property taxes within certain limits established by law. This, is 1.75 is an establishment by law?
And you're on page two, you said?
Page two.
That was pretty lengthy. Oh, okay, yeah, 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 yeah. Yes, the maximum tax burden that we can shift in this city is 1.75. The other communities don't have that option because their residential base might be a lot lower than the commercial, industrial. So we are, there is a chapter 200 in the recap that states that if we meet certain criterias, we can shift a certain amount. Usually stops at 150, but because the city of Lawrence's residential base is that much higher, we can shift to 1.75. As long as, as long as the residential pay their fair share, we can shift all the way to 1.75.
Okay. Going over to page, page five. The what's allowable new growth? Second paragraph.
Yep.
New growth is a calculation of an added increase in property values due to construction activity, new buildings, additions, new personal property accounts, on new equipment on existing accounts, and the DOR assessed utility values. What is, just what is that?
DOR assessed utility values is poles and wires of a public ways.
What?
The Department of Revenue is, actually values all the poles and wires of a public ways.
The poles?
Poles and wires of a public ways, those are taxable.
It's either my ears or it's the acoustics in this place, sometimes I don't, I can't understand what you're saying.
Is the acoustics in this?
Yeah, I know, I had a hard time.
Twenty things, both of yous have that.
Pardon me?
You have such a bass in your, in your voices, the voice is hard.
So you say that, that's the telephone poles?
Yes, the Department of Revenue is, determines the value for poles and wires of a public ways for every community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
But why is that considered a new growth?
Because that's new equipment. Most of the time, these big companies purchase new equipments and they have to report it to the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue in turn, the Bureau of Local Assessment in turns certifies that value for every community and we have our fair share. And that number is very healthy for the city of Lawrence. It's a, it's a significant amount of money in personal property.
So what percent would you, would you say that that represents in reference to the total of new growth? Have any idea?
Probably much the 870,000. Yeah, I would say about 60% of the.
50% of it?
It's very high, it's, it's a very healthy number.
When I was referred to councilors, it's considered personal property, so that's the, on the very bottom of page five, the next to last line.
Personal property?
Personal property, that's where the wires and poles are. It's included in personal property.
That's 870,000 dollars of certified new growth.
Right, and, and I'm saying, the state values most of that money.
Continuing on, on page six. Some of these classifications, property classifications, like 101 is a single-family home, 102 is condos.
Yep.
When you get down into the 501 series here, 501, 2, 3, 504, 550, 552, 505, and 508, what are those?
That's all personal property.
Pardon me?
All personal property.
What type of personal property?
You have 501s as your local, local businesses, your mom and pop stores.
I'm not making it out.
501s are your local businesses.
Local businesses?
Yeah, you know, corporations, manufacturers, and things of that nature. Retail, all the businesses that are associated with that class.
But it's, it's just, it's just the equipment inside that business, not the building itself.
Correct.
Right.
It's just the equipment.
It's just the equipment. It's all the personal property accounts. So.
Anything not, sorry, the microphone.
I can hear you.
Anything not, anything non-realty is personal property. So, realty, land and building, okay, that's, that's the realty piece and everything else is personal property.
Okay.
Anything in the conduct of business is taxable.
Does, do these 503Cs appear anywhere in here?
503Cs? If they're charitable.
Any, any, any business church or anything else's property that's?
The exempt value?
Exempt values is in the bottom, it's 723 million dollars, those are your local state buildings, your churches, as Mr. Russell mentioned, Lawrence General Hospital, excuse me.
That's the exempt value?
Those, those, those are the exempt values, that's, that's not tiffs, that's actually all the not, non-taxable properties in the city of Lawrence. You're talking about your schools, you're talking about City Hall, you're talking about the library, anything that's.
Anything the city owns.
Anything the city, state, or churches exempt entity owns, yeah.
Including nonprofits?
No, it depends, if a nonprofit is not automatically exempt, nonprofits, if they lease, sell, rent, they are taxable, not sell. If they rent or lease space, they are on the tax roll. For instance, the Y, the Y MCA, I think they rent the apartment buildings above. Anything that they use for their own mission is exempt. However, they're renting those apartment units, that's on the tax roll. So they're making money and consider the city of Lawrence Uncle Sam, we want a piece of that, so they are on the tax roll.
Okay. Still, that's a healthy amount exempt.
Well, remember, how many schools? We have 26 schools. We have 30 parks, that's all, you know, that's, that's a, not an easy number to defend, but you have to take a look at the, you know, at the city of Lawrence and what, you know, the schools is, it's a big, it's a big deal.
Any more question, Mr. Toomey?
Oh, yeah, I'm not done yet.
Huh? Oh, you're not done? Go ahead.
I, I still have green, yellow, and orange to go, so.
Go ahead. Have fun, have fun.
Who's keeping green?
Okay, I think you answered this question when you, when you put up the display. On page nine, where the shift went, from 197, 190, 183. Those three areas here for 2005 through 2007?
Correct.
You mentioned that the state allowed us to do that.
Correct, they, they considered it called, they called it the Menino Bill.
The what?
The Menino Bill.
The Menino Bill. What was that for?
That's because the values of residential properties increased significantly more than the commercial, industrial side, so there was a huge shift in the, the communities that weren't allow, weren't afforded the opportunity to increase their tax shift or keep the history of the tax shift, weren't allowed to set a tax rate.
Second.
Sorry. There's a motion, excuse me, there's a motion on the floor, it's been properly second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. You may continue, Counselor Toomey.
Yeah, so the legislation wrote a bill to allow communities to, A, if they didn't set their tax rate in December, allow them to the end of January, while they worked on this bill. And allowed communities to historically raise to the maximum shift they've, they've done in the past. It's simply the residential values increased higher than the commercial.
Okay.
For those years.
So Lawrence, Lawrence took effect, Lawrence took advantage of that, right? Those, those periods?
Yep.
Now, on page 10. Under the. Under the residential new growth. Going down from 2010 to 2015, it looks like we're anywhere around, what's that, 206, 200 million dollars? Is that represented at 200 million dollars?
Yeah, a couple hundred thousand.
Then all of a sudden, in 2016, it's up to 480.
Correct.
Why's that?
We're seeing two things. Trend, we're seeing...
I can't hear what he's saying.
They were fixing the...
They were fixing the TV because there was another show on the, on the TV.
And no one can hear you.
And now, and now you are...
Now you're seen on the...
Do I look good on TV?
Yeah, you are.
Thank you.
Now you're in TV.
They were hearing your voice, but showing my face.
Oh, yeah, that's what it was.
That's what it feels like in here.
Is that age before the meeting again?
For instance, there were some major projects that came onto the tax roll. I'll highlight two of them. There were two 121As, they're affordable housing units that were in payment in lieu of taxes, right? So, their 40-year agreement that the council and the mayor 40 years ago decided to give these properties, came onto the tax roll, at a tune of about $6 million each. So instead of them, these companies paying the state, now they're paying the city at 100%. So they're going to be paying our, their fair share to the City of Lawrence on January 1st. So they became an exempt, not exempt, they're a pilot that came onto the tax roll on the residential class. The two projects that I'm talking about is on Park Street, Park Street apartment buildings, right off Broadway and Park Street, really nice ones.
Park Towers?
Park Towers, yes. And then the Rita Hall, was the other one.
Rita.
Now, why... Why would they consider that new growth? I can understand.
This is the first time they're being taxed locally.
Yeah, so what's going to happen next time?
They're not new growth, they're just going to be on the tax roll.
They're just going to be on the tax roll.
They're just going to be on the tax roll. For example, if you're a personal property business.
Yeah, but why wouldn't you just put them on the tax roll anyways? I mean, just initially? Why, why put it into new growth?
Because it's, it's a combination of the two. So you're not double-dipping, you're basically saying, look, this is the first time this property is being taxed locally. So the state allows you to raise that property in new growth. You didn't see that money last year, you didn't see that property on the tax roll last year. This is the first time. So when we describe new growth, it's new construction, new parcels, new additions, et cetera, existing personal property accounts that purchased new equipment. These folks were not on the tax roll last year. For instance, you have a single-family home, you had a garage, you were taxed last year, but the garage, the garage wasn't. That becomes new growth.
So it falls into these definitions of new growth?
Yes.
In other words, it wasn't there last year, and now it's there this year, so it's a new growth number.
Still, they were being taxed at a certain level.
It was, it was not being taxed locally last year. This year, it will be. The state was picking it up and giving us a payment in lieu of tax that came in somewhere else. So this is the first time it's on the tax rolls, which means it, for this year only, it'll be considered new growth. Next year, it'll just be part of the previous levy.
These people aren't TIFs, this type of thing, is this what it was?
This wasn't a TIF, it's a low-income housing, chapter 121A of the Mass General laws allowing a 40-year tax credit to build low-income housing. So these, these were done 40 years ago, and this is the end of the 40 years for two agreements, as Alex mentioned, two projects. They're in their 41st year, now we get to pick them up.
But so, they didn't pay any taxes at all, city tax at all, prior to this?
Yeah, prior to this, they're paying tax to the state, and the state was giving it to us as part of our state aid, in essence. Now, now we're going to get it directly.
But did the city get any tax money from them?
We received a, a payment in lieu of tax from them.
Payment in lieu of tax?
In lieu of tax from, from this, from, from the entity to the state, and then the state followed it back to us. Is that correct, Alex?
Okay, was that, was that the amount deducted from the, the, the tax value that we see here as new growth? In other, in other words, if the, if the city received $1 million in lieu of, and their tax values, city tax value now is up to 4 million, is that 1 million subtracted from the 4 million, so it only, based it on 3 million for new growth?
You're saying the, what was the payment in lieu of tax versus the actual tax bill?
Yeah.
And, and the actual tax bill is going to be more than the payment in lieu of tax. I don't know what the number is, but I think in general, this year, wasn't it a couple hundred thousand attributable in new growth attributable to this?
Okay, I'm down to the orange, so don't get too excited over here.
You still have?
I got one. Still have yellow to go.
Just keep orange. Don't get excited.
No, I'll probably get my head handed from you to this one. On page 11. We go through the calculation of the levy limit, the levy. In 2015, the previous budget, 2.5% was, was removed, as far as being presented to the budget. Now, I, I know Alex and I talked about this one. I asked the question, I says, what would happen if, if we remove the, the 2.5% from the current calculation? He said, well, we either have to increase, cut, cut, cut the... We, we have to increase the revenue, find some way of increasing revenue, or reduce expenses.
I think what you're referring to on page 11 is section 2B, which is the 2.5% number.
The 2.5%, yeah.
Which is 1,513,882.
Right.
If we were not to use that number, like we, like the mayor did the previous year, we would have to cut the budget 1.5 million dollars.
Or, could we use free cash?
That would, that would be, free cash expired last year, but that would be a vote to, uh, 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 seek, use of free cash to reduce the tax rate, I guess is what you're suggesting.
Say that again?
To use free cash to reduce the tax rate.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be looked favorably upon, from our bond rating agencies, we just received a bond rating increase. That would not be a favorable act. It would not look favorably if we did that. I wouldn't recommend it, I don't think the mayor's recommended it, but that would be the, that would be the mayor's...
Could you answer a question for me? Do we have any free cash left?
We just received our certification of free cash just a week or so ago, it's 7.4 million.
7.4 million dollars?
7.4 million. It's reduced from 9.5 million the previous year.
Last, last, I think the last budget was 9.5 million, right?
9.5 million.
So now it's $7 million.
7 million.
This is free cash, this is... This is everything that was in, was within the budget that was not spent?
It's, it's a number of things, but it's a carryover from the previous year.
How much of a carryover?
Because we didn't spend it all the previous year.
How much of a carryover?
About 2.5 million. And then there's 2.5 million, and then there's estimated revenues, our actual revenues exceeded our estimated revenues we used in the budget, and then our actual expenditures were less than what we anticipated in the operating, as part of the budget. That's part of the mayor's initiative. Every spring, we put a, put a freeze on spending, and a majority of, of the free cash is generated by holding departments, departmental spending in the last quarter of the year.
Basically, basically of the $7 million that's been, the $7 million that's free cash currently, approximately $5 million is based on the current budget, the 2 million was a carryover from the previous...
Yes.
Year. And you're saying that the DOR would not look favorably on utilizing any of that?
Yeah, I don't think our overseer would approve of that, number one, and of course, the, because we do have an overseer. But the ratings agencies, the bond rating agencies would not look favorably upon that because they're looking for us to build our reserves because we don't have them at an adequate level. But, you know, it's a, these are, these are policy decisions which I'm not involved in. I'm, I'll make a recommendation from, as a financial director here, to keep the city on the straight and narrow as best I can, but these are policy decisions on how to spend money. But what, what put us where we are today, I can assure you, is, is decisions using free cash, overestimating our revenues and, and spending more money than we really could afford. We've seemed to have stopped that, and now we are at a point where, at least for four operating budgets in a row, we've been able to manage it, which is attributable, has nothing to do with me, it has everything to do with the city departments and manag, city management. They've really done an outstanding job, department heads.
What kind of, if, if it was removable, what kind of effect would it have on the publication of a tax rate?
Well, on the, the levy would be reduced from 62,275 to 60, 60,800, something like that, a million five less.
Million five.
On the levy. And that would be spread over all the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you. I'm all done.
You're set? Are you sure?
How's that? Okay.
Great job.
Is there anybody else? Yes, Mr. LeBlanc.
A quick question for Mr. Vega. And if we did not have the split classification system, and we are at a 1, what would the average tax rate be for a single-family?
The average tax...
Not the rate, the average tax, average tax bill.
The average tax bill would be, I think we talked about this. It's $19.51 per thousand, and the average tax bill, apologize. Would be $3,511.80.
So two things jump out at me. And can you give me what the average tax bill would be for a commercial?
Absolutely.
6,551?
51.
51. All right, so let's put, let's put this in a little bit of context now. So we decided that we're going to go, for a number of years now, and we're going to do it again this year, and I think rightfully so, we're going to go split tax rates. So if we, if we did not do the split tax rate, our pri, our average single-family household would pay $3,511. Under the current motion before us right now, that number will be $2,772. In the back of the envelope, we're looking at approximately an $800 reduction. So already, because we decided that we're going to not have a, we're going to have a split rather than a one rate, we're going down. But on the other side, we've got to find the money elsewhere, right? So we're going toward the commercial and businesses for money. So, if you're a commercial business individual, under the single tax rate, you just told me, $6,551. But if this motion passes, you're adding an additional $5,000 to the businesses, to a tune of $11,464. I just think it's important that we just understand that, that, that under, what we're going to do tonight, no matter if it's 175 or 169, whichever way it goes, the residents of our city are going to benefit from having the split tax code, no matter which way we go. And no matter which way we go, if you're a commercial entity in the city, you're not being favored by this. No matter which way you go, 175 to 169, you're paying more. So I just wanted to dispel any kind of myths about equity, and know that, that we are, as residents here, we're paying a lot less because we're deciding to go with the split tax code. Not only are we doing that, but we're also not taxing to the limit. I think I did some back, again, back of the envelope stuff. We're, we're down 1.5 million dollars. We could have gone up 1.5 million dollars if we went to the tax levy, and we did not. So who benefits from us not going to the 1.5? Everybody does, both businesses, commercials, and residents. So I just think that we just need to put some perspective on this, and, you know, we, we get kind of caught up on different things, but I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're aware of what those impacts are. It's getting late, so I'll stop talking there, I think I made my point. Thank you.
Counselor Nilka Alvarez Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yes, Mr. Vega. I know that, you know, when we voted on the, on the budget, we sort of said, okay, this is how much money we have to let it, right, from taxes, in order to balance our budget. And in some cases, we're even looking at not only balancing the budget, but also meeting the goal of increasing our free cash so that we continue to have a good bond rate. One of the, the problems that I had, and I think a lot of the counselors had, at least counselors that I spoke to, was people who were really upset about the tax increase. There's not anything you can do about that, you know, we did that. But perhaps, by looking at the 1.75, we can offer some type of relief. While there is a good portion, or half of the city, that have good jobs, are blessed with beautiful families and beautiful homes, and beautiful, um, mon, I guess, money in the sense that, that they're able to buy all the beautiful things that they want. It is unfortunate that there is also, I would say, a little more than half of people in Lawrence that are hurting. And our employment rate, and I said it before, and I'll say it again, according to the, the State Department, continues to be greater than the state's unemployment rate. Our unemployment rate, let me be clear, continues to be greater than the state's unemployment rate. Knowing that, I could not consciously decide on a rate factor that would continue to raise what they would have to pay into the pot, so that we can continue to balance. I know commerce has been great to us, but I also know that there have been occasions when, although we provided tax incentives and the like, these industries and some businesses have left us without benefit. So we didn't get a chance to benefit from their being here, and we didn't get a chance to even get there, and by, I mean, by benefit, meaning to paying their taxes, paying their water, you know, sewer bills. We know we've had companies that have done that, and we know there are small businesses that, you know, or mixed-site businesses that have done that. You know, there wasn't so much publicity about them as there was over the paper mill, et cetera, but they exist, and we are hurting because of that. I also know that there may be some other businesses... I also know that there may be some other businesses that may be leaving us, that actually employ people in Lawrence. So, you know, again, I'm not talking about the losses of people who promised to hire people in Lawrence and then don't, but I'm actually speaking of people who follow through and employ people in Lawrence that we may lose. In fact, I'm asking that we, I talked to the President and asked that through communications, I can deal with an urgent factor right now that we're facing, that may be a loss of three hundred jobs for Lawrence. Okay? In good conscience, I second the one-point-seven-five factor, because I know that there are people who are really hurting, and who have worked hard, even through the, the whole housing problem, the housing problem that we had, you know, where a lot of the people face foreclosure, and that whole housing crisis, these people managed to hold on, to hold on, to hold on to their properties, to do whatever they had to do to hold on to their properties. Maybe we buy less bread, maybe we buy less eggs, you know, we may not have a problem with Dr. Lawrence and Dr. Race's obesity fees, because a lot of people are having problems buying meals, and, and a lot of people are having problems paying off for medicine, you know, and, and, and other health factors. But again, I think it's important that we recognize that there is more than half of a population in Lawrence that is suffering at this point, and that we need to do whatever small, you know, step, take whatever small step we can take to try to alleviate some of that. And, you know, I want to thank you for giving a really good presentation, you know, I want to thank Mr. Anicello for explaining some of these issues. The only one question that I have, and you may say, well, how did that lead to that? But I know that people say, well, people have to pay their taxes, and oftentimes, they believe that the people that are not paying their taxes, which is a fallacy, they believe that it is the working poor that is not paying their taxes. And you know what? They're the ones paying their taxes and hurting, and they're the ones who call me and say, do you think there could be any relief? This is really hard, you know, but they've done it, they paid it. And I know you said that there are certain criteria in order to have some type of tax amnesty, but I recall, when we all went, I was here for the Manino piece, I was an advocate of the Manino piece, and I recall that when we had that amnesty, we were able to get in so many dollars, I mean, we did great. We put a lot of people up to date, you know, people came here and told us, the treasurer, everybody was happy. Is there any way, Mr. Anicello, is there any way, Mr. Vega, that this town, given the unemployment rate, given some of the other poverty rates that we are looking at here, is there any way that we can apply for an amnesty and bring it to the council for their consideration?
The tax amnesty is an act of the legislature, so they did do that in 2010 or so, and we, that's the last time we had a tax amnesty, and it was to forgive some of the interest, not necessarily the tax. But that was the last amnesty. There was talk about a tax, an amnesty program when the Baker administration came into, into office, but it didn't move anywhere. They had some tax amnesty ethic at the state income tax level, but not at the, it didn't pass down to the local level. But, you know, it is something that, you know, it's an act of, requires an act of legislature, so I'm not sure a home role petition would work on something like that, but...
But we would have, you know, we could consider some of the problems that we're having, right?
Well, yeah.
And maybe frame it in such a way that the legislature might see the benefit of, of having an amnesty again.
Well, in general, as the last, the last tax amnesty that was offered, the legislature allows the amnesty program, and the community gets to, gets to initiate or gets to implement how they would like to give the tax amnesty out, so there's some local control once the legislature approves of a tax amnesty program. So it has been, it was afoot recently, I know, I know I get several questions about, is there any talk of tax amnesty for the municipalities, but it was kept at the state level, is my understanding, and it hasn't been anything yet. But that, that doesn't mean something wouldn't happen in the future, in which case then the, we'd come back to local control, how would we like to implement that tax amnesty program?
And if we could demonstrate how many people are facing bankruptcy, I mean, particularly those parents that have just finished paying and owe student loans for their children, and their own loans in some cases, I don't know, I just seem, I believe that there are so many factors that are affecting us, you know, that is affecting our local economy, that it would be great if we, at some point, with your guidance, and your guidance, Mr. Vega, be able to come up with a request for an amnesty program, once again. I mean, because it would be great, the number of people that came up and pay their bills finally.
Well, that's a, I would, I would urge those watching or listening tonight to contact your state legislature and ask for an amnesty, and see if we can, something can be initiated, but that's the, that's the course we need to take.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else? I have, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor...
Thank you, Council President. And through you, after listening to a lot of the stuff that has been said here, what's hurtful to me is that people like the small business owners who do pay their taxes, who do not have a tax incentive forgiveness, are going to have to come out their pockets for this, you know, like the businesses that we have, you know, like the Brian DePengas and the Raphael's and Guzman's and et cetera.
Being the very small businesses.
The small businesses, and, and it's hurtful, but there's a solution to this. You walk up to the third floor, and you let them know that they cannot continue to give these big companies tax incentives where they can get that money from, and stop trying to take it out of the little people, the ones who are paying their taxes. It could be done, it could be done, it could be done. Just walk upstairs and let them know, because that's where, that's where those decisions can be made, as to who gives tax incentives, up there, complain up there, there is a solution. And I'll repeat it again, hay una solucion, go to the third floor, because that's where they need to hear you. We represent you, we're your voice, but they need to hear you there, because that's where the complaints go to. We cannot solve what, what will be vetoed or said, I'm not listening to, because it's, it's proven, it's proven already. Things that we think is, is good for the residents of the city of Lawrence, it gets vetoed, it gets shut up, and it gets not, not used, and it's a waste of our time, most of the time. We spend lots of hours here trying to resolve things that you guys, our residents, tell us that we need to voice, and then we just get shut up. It's like a cup gets put over us, and we're just talking to the cup. We can see everything around us, but we're in a glass cup, and we're just talking to ourselves, even though we can see the outside, but we're just speaking to ourselves because there's no one else listening, and that's hurtful. Like I said, those one-point-seven-five is going to urge the small business owners who are paying their taxes and who this is going to hurt, is going to urge them to go unify and go where they need to go to, to, to express their, their plight, as to why it is so important that these big, if we're, if we're going to do these types of incentives, why don't, why, why don't the little companies get it? Why just these big companies? That's the other thing. Residents don't get that type of, of incentive. Look at the situation I'm going through right now. As of, I pay a thousand fifty dollars for rent, and as of January first, my rent will be fourteen hundred dollars. I have no say, I can't do anything about it, and this is all because of this same situation, because my landlord can't afford to pay the mortgage, and the taxes, and the water, and the insurance, and anything else that's gone up on that end. So guess what? My rent has to go up three hundred dollars. But where does anyone going to get that money from? Where? So I got to go to the beautified Merrimack Street and go to DTA office so they can help me over there. You're a city counselor, and I'm not ashamed to say it.
Okay.
And I'm not afraid, wait, 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 and I'm not afraid to say it. But like I was saying, that there is a solution, that small business owners need to go to where they need to go to, which is the complaint department, up there, third floor, corner office, says mayor on it, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if they changed at all, because it, I don't know if it just says mayor or mayor and CEO, but it should say something like that, just in case. I just want to make sure that everybody's referenced to the right place. So complaint office, third floor, we'll, we'll voice what, whatever can be voiced from here. But this is the thing, and then the people, the people like us, the landlords get hit with that, and then it's the ones that cannot afford to pay the rent. And then we don't have grants and rent subsidy programs that are going to help us, me, the Sandys in the city, and, 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 and I represent a lot of those people. And you know how I know how to help? Because I've been there. Because if you, if you haven't been without a gallon of milk, to you, it will cost you nothing to say to somebody if they call you on a Saturday, oh, I need a gallon of milk. Oh, you can wait till Monday. But if you, if you have not had that gallon of milk, you're going to be like, hold on a second, I have half, and you can have half of that to, to put you over till Monday. But we need to come together to make that happen, because if not, we're just going to keep on ending up in this solution. And this tax stuff incentive and all this other stuff that's been happening in the city of Lawrence and all that, it affects the landlords, it affects the residents who, you know, us, we're trying to live here and do what we need to do, us trying to support our families, the ones giving up everything to, to, to be here, representing, do what we need to do. I mean, and it's not fair to the landlords either, they need to, John, we're watching a different meeting on the TV. Thank you. So are you serious? Is, is somebody trying to tell me to be quiet? Well, you know what? Now I'm going to take more time. So like I was saying, I thought everybody wanted to go home, right? I'm just kidding, I will end this right now. But we, we really need to do what we need to do, it's the little people who get hurt, and then us as parents, if we can't, if we can't pay the rent, we need to get that money from somewhere else, and it's our kids who we can't buy the things that they need. Then they end up on the street trying to, you know, fill the, fill the little gaps, and then that's where we end up with higher drug action and everything else, because everybody's trying to fill a gap in a different way, and that's what ends up happening. So it just trinkles down the line, it just trinkles down the line into, 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 into our streets, into our communities, into our well-being, and into the heart of Lawrence, because we're the heart of the city of Lawrence. But, yeah, one-point-seven-five, thank you.
Mr. Toomey, briefly.
Very brief, very briefly. Mr. Vega? Just on page nine. With me?
Yep.
Okay, 2008, the tax factor was one-point-seven-five, 2009 the same, 2010 the same, 2011. 2012, it was one-seven-three, then one, one-seven-two, and then the last two years was one-seven-one. To your knowledge, is it, has that the fact that the factor favors the commercial shown any increase in the businesses within the city of Lawrence? In other words, has there been an incentive for people to want to come to Lawrence and have a business?
Well, that's one consideration, they want to know what the tax rate is.
But to your knowledge, has that, has, has there been an increase in the, in the basics in the city of Lawrence, new businesses?
I couldn't tell you that that's the choice that they make when they move to, or they come, they decide on the city of Lawrence or the town of Methuen. All I can tell you is, the city of Lawrence is the best bank for your buck. At the end of the day is, although Methuen might have a smaller tax rate, their assessment is much higher than Lawrence's.
Properties worth more?
Properties worth more. So at the end of the day, they take both factors into consideration. If I purchase this building, Washington Mills just sold for thirteen million dollars, is my assessment going to be raised thirteen million dollars? My answer to them is no. I have to take into consideration other approaches to value, which is the income approach to value.
But this is one of them, this is one of the, this is one of the kind of stipulations, not stipulations, but one of the things that's considered.
Right, right, absolutely.
Again, too, do you, do you happen to know whether or not it has an effect, has had an effect in the last four years, as to whether more businesses have moved into Lawrence because of the favorable tax rate?
Honestly, I don't keep those statistics. I know I do have those conversations with, you know, potential investors, and I couldn't tell you if they pulled the trigger because, or walked away because of the tax factor that this council adopts.
Okay, thank you.
Phil Seid? Counselors, there is a motion on the floor.
I do have one.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a happy question.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Before anything, I'd like to thank the, you know, the chief assessor for putting this presentation together. I know we've discussed it in length already, so I'll be very brief. I know Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez mentioned earlier that there was, you know, a potential three-hundred job losses here in the city, and that could possibly be, I probably have the information...
Thank you.
In reference to that, and I think that it is important that we do maintain a good, healthy balance in the city to support our homeowners and to also support our small businesses. And we do have the opportunity to do that tonight, and have it as a balance. Counselor LaPlante asked a very important question earlier in regards to maintaining a factor of, if we only kept it as a factor of one and gave some comparisons in regards to the one-seventy-five under number one. But I'd like to give a comparison more detailed in reference to what has been presented to us tonight, which is specifically to looking at year 2014, if we go to page nine, we'll notice that that was the first time we implemented the one-point-seventy-one factor, the residential rate was fifteen dollars...
Your microphone's not on. It's still not on? Oh. I apologize about that.
That is too loud.
Can you guys hear me again?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. If we go, if we go to page nine and we look at the year of 2014, we'll notice that the residential rate was fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents, and the commercial, industrial, personal rate was thirty-three dollars and seventy cents. That was the first time that we implemented a one-point-seventy-one factor. If we were to maintain a similar factor for this fiscal year, that means that the increase for the residents of the city of Lawrence per, for fiscal year 2016 will be a penny for each a thousand dollars' worth of their, their property. So we're talking about a one-cent increase to the, to the property, to the residential rate. When we look at the commercial, industrial, and personal, it will be a thirty-four cents savings. Once again, for Counselor Armonte, Counselor Armonte, if we go to page nine, you look at fiscal year 2014. You look at fiscal year 2014, which is the first year when we implemented factor one-point-seven-one. So the increase for the residential rate in comparison to that first year, that first year, it was fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Proposed factor one-point-seven-one is fifteen dollars and sixty-two cents. The difference between the two, it's one penny. When we look at the commercial, industrial, personal rate, in 2014, we're talking about thirty-three dollars and seventy cents. When we look at the proposed today, it's thirty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. So there's a thirty-four cents difference for the commercial, industrial, personal. For the residential, it's a one penny difference. The reason I bring this up is because I, I personally think that we should find a common ground in the, you know, choice that we decide to make at, tonight. We could go from one-sixty-nine to one-seventy-five, based on the presentation, based on the numbers that have been presented. I think one-seventy-one, or even one-seventy-two, if so, if necessary, will be... I think 1.71, or even 1.72 if so, if necessary, will be reasonable amounts. And I say this because when you look at the difference in 1.71 for the single-family tax rate, if I do a quick calculation, the overall increase, average increase will be $1.39 a year. So it comes to big surprise to me. Why would a landlord decide to charge an extra $350 a month to any particular resident? Because it's a $39 increase yearly in your taxes. 350 times 12, it's $4,200, which is double the amount of your tax bill. So $350,000 is double the amount of your tax bill. And I want to make that clear. So I don't see why any landlord will increase. I mean, at the end of, I'm a landlord, I own property, I have, you know, tenants. And I don't think it's a fair thing to do. It is not a fair thing to, I have the floor this time. I have the floor this time, thank you. It is not a fair thing to do. And because of that, we have to look at other, you know. With that said, $350 a month, it's way beyond what we are discussing here tonight. For the single family in the city of Lawrence, we're talking about $1,2400 increase a year. Why will you need to raise $4,200 in rent to your tenants? It's unfair, really unfair. And those individuals are taking advantage of information that has been misguided in the media through different sources, whether it's written or radio. There has been a lot of misinformation since the beginning of the conversation back in the month of May when the budget was originally submitted. And that has led to a lot of folks in the city of Lawrence feeling discomfort and not having information that is accurate. Tonight, the information that we have before us is accurate information. And we should make decisions based on accurate information rather than, you know, what has been said on a radio station or has been written on newspapers. Additionally, a lot has been mentioned about TIFs in the city of Lawrence. If I recall correctly, and I know we have two new, we do have two new colleagues here in the city, in the city council now, who might not be aware of it. But during this fiscal year, during this fiscal year, we have approved one TIF. During the last fiscal year, we approved one TIF. It has made, it appears and has been said as if we are approving TIF on a monthly basis and that we are allowing businesses not to pay taxes. That has not been the case. There's two TIFs that have been approved during our term in office. One during this fiscal year and one during the last fiscal year. The first one, Asahi America, in, which is in Andover Street, near the Greater Lawrence Vocational School. The one that was approved this year, it's on Marston Street by the Lopez Company that will be building a medical center. So we have one per fiscal year during the last term that we have been elected officers here. We haven't been approving TIFs on a regular basis like it has been brought up. That is not the case. It is important that we have factual information and based on factual information, we should make wise decisions to better our city. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to approve the 1.75 factor. It has been properly seconded. It means that the tax rate for residential will be 15.40 and the commercial, industrial tax rate will be 34.14. It also means that there will be a reduction, if we approve this factor, there will be a reduction of 22 cents from our current 1.71 and there will be an increase of .78 cents in the industrial from 1.71. Okay, so again, the motion is to approve a 1.75 factor. We're gonna take a vote, or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Councillor Vasquez?
No.
Councillor LaPlante?
No.
Councillor Tumi?
Yes.
Councillor Reyes?
No.
Councillor Armonte?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
No.
Councillor Abdu?
No.
Councillor Vice President?
Yes.
And Councillor President?
Yes. Councillors, is there another motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve a factor of 1.71.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve a factor of 1.71. It has been properly seconded. Are there any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Mr. Vega. Remember, the first year that we came on board this body, there was no increase on the taxes, but the new growth did cause an increase in terms of people. So even though we say there is no tax increase because there was no deliberate tax proposal put on the floor, the new growth did mean that the taxes went up a little bit. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Now, when we deal with this with the new rate, also the issue of the new growth, have you been using the strategy of including the new growth in what we're levying? Or have you maintained it separate?
It's separate when we submit it to the state, but it's allowable to be raised in your levy. So in essence, we certify, the Department of Revenue, local assets within the Department of Revenue certifies the city's values, okay, separately. You have your values and you have your new growth. In essence, that's still triggering your levy. That's still allowable and the commissioner allows that in your levy limit budgeting purposes. So in essence, it is combined as one. It is together.
Right. But it's together after you come back from giving DOR these numbers, right? And these numbers do not include the new growth.
These numbers include the new growth.
But that's what I asked you, and you said you keep it separate.
That number is included. Everything is included. Proposition two and a half and new growth is included in these numbers. It's nothing separate that's gonna be added after the council votes on the factor. These are the hardcore numbers, nothing's gonna change.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you again. Are you using the strategy in order to have the two and a half, whatever, of including the new growth with the taxes that are gonna be levied?
Yes.
Okay, so the answer is yes, it's not no?
Yeah, it's yes.
Okay, so even here, now explain to me, when you said that when you give it to DOR, it will be separate?
No, it's the first thing that is, before we go, the board assesses, beats with the councillors, first thing has to happen is the values have to be certified. Full and fair cash market value has to be certified every year before the board presents to the subcommittee for council in order to public hearing. There's nothing that we're gonna go back to the state for to ask them to certify other than this council's vote and the recap. So strategically, every year before the budget is passed, we estimate what the new growth is gonna be. We present that number to the Budget and Finance Director and the mayor so that they can propose their budget. That's done in February of every year. So again, we estimated, and this budget was $1 million. What was certified was 1.6.
Right, and councillor, the calculation is slide 11, page 11. That has the, how the tax levy is determined and the calculation on page 11.
On page 11, okay.
So it begins with the prior year's levy, times two and a half percent, plus new growth, equals the next year's levy.
Okay, so plus new growth, plus what you intend to increase, what the city intends to increase.
Well, it's two and a half percent. We can't go up 5%, we can only go up two and a half.
I know you can't go beyond that.
Yep.
But it's also true that the new growth would allow you to raise it, even let's say if we were according to this. It's a way, like, sort of like a loophole, it's a way around. If you can't, if you can't go beyond two and a half, right? I'm reading your stuff here.
Yep, but the two and a half limitation, the law states that you can't go up, that you can take the prior year's levy, times two and a half percent, and that's a number. And on top of that, you have to then go back and figure out, well, what are all the new properties and so forth? Because that's an addition, that wasn't there last year. So when you're taking two and a half percent of the prior year number, you're missing something. It's all the new construction, you know, as Alex mentioned earlier. And that's what qualifies as new growth. It wasn't there last year, so it's not two and a half percent. So in essence, it's two and a half percent plus new growth.
You have new growth, you add on new growth.
That's right.
Okay, so it is sort of a loophole.
Well, it's not a, it's a loophole, it's not a loophole. The new growth is there to make sure, if I put an addition on my house and double my house, we have the same house, but I double mine.
Right.
And I get the same tax bill as you, that wouldn't be fair. I'd be, I should be getting more because I doubled the size of my house. So if we didn't pick up new growth, I'd be getting an unfair advantage over you, who, we had identical houses last year, this year I doubled the size of it and I'm paying the same tax as you. That wouldn't be fair to you and anybody else. So that's why new growth really makes it fair.
Okay.
Because that gets spread out over all the.
So the people that actually did the addition to the house, this is very important.
Yes.
The addition to the house, et cetera, will be the ones who receive a higher tax bill, okay? And it's really not the tax increase, but the new growth.
That's right.
So someone who comes to you and says, "Look, this was my bill last year and this is what they said is going to be, that they predict. Look, it's a great increase." Then I'm probably talking to someone who may have had some new growth, probably.
That could be, but the other thing is the, and I'll have Alex speak to this, but in general, in the neighborhood, maybe some houses sold at a much higher level all of a sudden. And that's gonna impact the values in that neighborhood. And it might have increased more than two and a half percent because, you know, as there's 14,000 properties or so, some are gonna decrease in value, some are gonna increase in value. And it really just depends on where people want to live in the neighborhood. So a lot of that, you know, my tax bill can go up 6%, yours might go down 3%. But overall, it could only go up two and a half percent, all of us combined.
So if there was a house that was foreclosed upon, right? And they put it up for auction and it was sold at a value significantly less than what we paid for our houses, let's say. You're saying that that year, unless something else happens, you would be seeing a reduction in taxes?
The sales in the area impact value. So I'll ask, you know, maybe the foreclosure, foreclosure's taken into consideration.
The DOR does not allow us to use any foreclosures during our analysis. All we use is arm-length sales, willing buyer, willing seller, under no compulsion to sell or buy, with some understanding of the market.
So you're not to expect a reduction if it was auctioned off and sold at a significantly less?
Absolutely not.
Right.
If that trend continues on your street and that's gonna bear the market, then absolutely I have to take that into consideration.
Right.
I'm very hesitant in doing that because one unfortunate situation for one person, for that family, an investor is the one predominantly gonna purchase this property. And the real estate market in the city of Lawrence is hot.
So those values that have gone up because they sold property at a higher value than what we paid 10 years ago versus what people paid 20 years ago. Now, because of that, it is assumed that the value on every house on that block or in that, could I go as far as the neighborhood?
The neighborhood, correct.
The neighborhood, okay. So everybody in that neighborhood will see an increase because now we're saying, well, the property's values have gone up. And this is what I'm trying to say, when we sit here and we say it's only eight cents, it's only 12 cents, it's not true. When we look at the bills that people bring to us and our own bills and the fact that if your insurance and your taxes are with your mortgage, it's not, I don't care because the mortgage, it's included with the mortgage. No, your mortgage goes up. And if you were, you know, among the people that got bamboozled, you know, and have that, you know, variable rate, you're really messed up.
Yeah, and you've made a great point. And for the homeowners at home, taxpayers at home, if you did see an increase in your value, I just wanted to warn, just let everybody know, 82% of the values in the single-family homes in the city of Lawrence stayed the same.
Right.
So whatever tax average increase you see here, technically, for instance, my house is assessed the same as last year. I'm one of the fortunate ones that stayed the same. My bill's gonna go up $45 compared to the average of $85. That's gonna happen to the same homeowner in Mount Vernon who has the highest assessment in the city of Lawrence.
Right.
$440,000. That assessment is gonna go up 60 bucks.
Point of inquiry.
So just, right, for the folks at home that see an increase in their value, there is a process where folks can file for a no evaluation of their assessment. That period begins January 1 and ends February 1.
Right. And Mr. Vega and Mr. Adito, I want to thank you because I know that I'm not going crazy when I'm looking at these people's, you know, bills. It, there is a significant increase and it's not just eight cents and it's not just 12 cents.
This is, you know, this is very complicated.
It is very complicated, that's why we can't reduce it to eight cents.
It's very complicated.
Or we can't reduce it to a cup of coffee. Because it's not that, it's way more than that.
I couldn't agree more. It is a complicated subject.
And I want to thank you so much for really, you know, having me.
Thanks, thanks for assessing us.
And make sure that I'm not going crazy. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
I had a point of inquiry, Mr. President, when the conversation was going. My question at that time was, I just wanted to confirm that Mr. Vega had said $45 increase and that $45 will mean a year.
Motion to pass 11.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Continue.
So thank you, Mr. President. So Mr. Vega explained to us that, in particularly in his property, the tax increase that is expected to happen will be $45 a year. If we divide that by 12 months, we are talking about $3.75. It does average out to be a cup of coffee. It's $3.75. I think that it is important that we do explain to the community the actual numbers from the lowest to the highest so there's no confusions when they get their tax bill. The average tax bill, the average tax bill for my property will be $45. The average tax bill, the average tax bill for my property will be $14.71, $14.71 a month. That it is with the proposed motion that I have before the council, and I have a triple decker, and it's $14.71. As a homeowner, as a landlord, I don't see why I will increase the rent to any tenant for $350 a month extra when I know that my average increase a month, it's $14.71. To me, that is ludicrous. I think it is important that we provide the information as is to the residents, to the homeowners, to the to the renters, to the the business owners. Because if we provide accurate information, the community will understand what all these numbers mean. We have to bring it narrow it down to the smallest number in order to be able to explain what the big number means, and as a result, justify the presentation that has been provided to us tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, point of personal privilege. I understand the importance of giving an accurate picture, which is why I asked these questions. I don't know what neighborhood you're speaking of specifically, but I know my neighborhood, and the sales prices have gone up. And, you know, I know I live in a really attractive and appealing neighborhood. Because of it, you know, I was telling you, Prospect Hill, Back Bay Prospect Hill, will see bigger increases, you know, in their taxes because they're including the sales values going up. If we want to give an accurate picture, then we have to take into consideration that this is more complicated than it presents itself.
It is.
So I can't say that it's going to be a cup of coffee because it isn't. You know, it could be a lot more than that. And that's what we need to explain to the constituent, that it is more complicated than it seems. I voted along with you, you know, on the budget, but I also know that there were some, you know, issues surrounding that, not for everybody, but for a significant amount of people, which is why I decided that 1.75 might be what gives a little relief, a little relief from the increase that we voted on.
Councilors, we have we are looking at two extremes. 1.75 was the highest and the the highest factor, bringing the lowest tax rate for residential, and 1.71 is also an extreme in the lowest. I believe that we should find a reasonable solution in between.
Point of information, Mr. President.
Let me finish. I think we should find a reasonable solution in between. It seems to me that we should vote down the 1.71 factor and go for 1.73, which is a midpoint that would be more reasonable and more justifying to those people that are losing their jobs and those people who have a fixed income in our city. Go ahead.
1.71 is not the extreme. The extreme will be 1.69. Just wanted to make that as a point of clarification.
That's your judge, your judgment.
So we should find a mid-round between 1.69 and 1.75 then?
No, when we when we look at 1.69 and 1.75, the differences are very significant when we look at.
No, I mean, just to find common ground in between the two.
Remember that our current tax rate is 1.71.
71.
Okay? The factor is 1.71. So by choosing something in between will be more reasonable to both commercial and residential. Okay? So I would be voting against 1.71 in favor of 1.73. So I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor of the factor 1.71, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls?
No.
Roll call.
Council Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez.
No.
Counsel, Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counsel Abdu. I skipped Mr. Abdu.
You said Rodriguez.
Does it look like a Rodriguez?
No.
No.
No, okay. And Counsel Rodriguez, excuse me.
He said yes.
Still yes. Counsel Monte.
No.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Tumi.
No.
Counsel LaPlante.
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez.
Yes.
And Counsel President.
No.
Fails. Fails.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a 1.72 factor.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve a 1.72 factor, and it has been properly second. I think that we have had enough discussion on all the tax rates, so I think we should go ahead and take a vote.
Roll call.
Again, I will call, I will vote against it. I believe that the most reasonable is 1.73, so. All in favor of the 1.72 factor, say aye.
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 No.
Polls?
No. No.
Roll call.
Counsel Vasquez.
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante.
Yes.
Counsel Tumi.
No.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Monte.
No.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President.
No.
And Counsel President.
No.
Fails.
Fails.
I motion that.
You need six.
Six votes. I motion that we do the 1.73.
I second.
There is a motion on the floor to approve the factor 1.73. It has been properly second. Again, let's go right on a vote, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? You should propose it right away.
There's still gotta be a roll call vote. Still a roll call is suggested.
Roll call.
Counsel Counsel Vice President.
Yes.
Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Monte.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Tumi.
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante.
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez.
Yes.
And Counsel President.
Yes.
Congratulations, Counsel. We came to an understanding. That's great. Okay.
Counselor.
If I can get a signature. We have to sign.
Okay.
Mr. President, could we, I don't know if Counselor Monte will help me here, but we have a document that is not part of the agenda. If we could possibly make a motion to take it out of.
Which document is that?
It's 318, which is the appointment for Commission on Disability, one-year term.
Yes, I had I had that already in mind. There are two documents, actually, 318 and 319. We need to suspend the rule and take it take them those documents out of committee.
Move to suspend.
Again, Document 318 and 319, so. A motion to suspend the rule.
I so moved.
Second.
Motion has been made to suspend the rule and take Document 318 and 319 out of committee. It has been properly second.
What's it for again? I'm sorry, this is.
Document 318 and 319 are appointments to commissions.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay? Motion has been made and properly second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Or polls? The ayes have it. Anywhere?
Okay. Great.
Just give me a second and. Madam Chair of the Personal Committee.
Yes, Counsel President, thank you.
Madam Chair, let's accept it as a committee report first.
Yes.
Let's deal with Document 318.
Okay. Document 218 is the appointment to the Commission on Disability for a one-year term of Ms. Sharon Rubio McKenna, and I'd like to have this, the motion to accept the committee report.
Second.
Motion has been made to accept as a committee report. It has been properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or polls? The ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This was sent up in favor of with a favorable recommendation, and it was unanimous vote, and I would like to make that informal motion.
Second.
A motion has been made and properly second to approve. Will you please mention the name and the commission?
And it is once again for the appointment on the Commission on Disability for a one year term of Ms. Sharon Rubio McKenna. And Ms. Rubio McKenna is here, if anyone had any questions for her.
Yes, I would like to speak.
Thank you.
Will you come forward, please?
Ms. Rubio, I'll be quick. I know that we have other items.
I know.
I'm sorry. Ms. Rubio, I'm going to ask you to speak a little bit about yourself, but I want to first let people know that I've had the good fortune of knowing you for almost 15 years now, having known your mom, may she rest in peace, and, you know, your family and so on, and knowing how devoted you've been to helping people who have been blind and other people who have suffered disabilities, and how important you've been to getting PCAs or personal care attendants, you know, the whole issue of them being able to be paid properly, and how you voice your opinion about them having proper benefits so that they can then in fact continue to play an important role for elders and people with disabilities. You've been a wonderful constituent to have ever since I was a district counselor till, you know, 2006, when I became a council at large, and you, you know, have always been there to make sure that I'm checking in with what elders need and people with disabilities. So I thank you for that, and I know you're going to be a wonderful addition to the the Commission on Disability. But if you could please tell them, I know you've been a nurse, I know that, I mean, other people may not know this.
Actually, no, I only play one on TV. That's an old joke.
Yeah.
No, I haven't been a nurse. I've been working with people with different abilities, different ages, different problems. Med certified, of course, but, you know, as a nurse would be CPR and first aid, and, you know, you have to be like family, then you've got to be like staff. It's 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 a pretty interesting, interesting and wonderful, because I worked for the folks that I worked for, not the agencies or whatever. I worked for the people. So it was just I had found my niche at an older age and did the rest until I retired. So that's about it.
That's it. I mean, I know you're, you know, I think you're being a little bit shy about, you know, what you stand for, but that's okay. I think, you know, I've said a lot about how, you know, wonderful you are and what, you know, how important your role has been with elders and people with disability. And despite not being a nurse, although you don't play one on TV, but you actually do provide sort of like nursing assistance kind of assistance to people. So I'll leave it there, and I appeal to my colleagues to please, you know, vote in favor of this appointment.
And David, Mr. Abdu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to comment that I will be voting in support of the candidate. If you look at her CV, her resume, she has had a very robust career in human services and is now retired, and this won't be the first time that she is given to the community. And this is the type of citizen that we want, is someone who's given, wants to give again, and is here at 11:15, waiting for her turn, so.
I may be old, but it's not past my bedtime.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Counselors, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or polls? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you. Chairman of the Personal Committee, Document 319.
Thank you, Counsel President. Document 319, we, what is the situation with that? What are we going to do with that document? We have sent it up.
Accept as a report.
Okay. And then you're going to take it up? You're going to pull it out of committee?
Oh, no, no, there's no, I'm sorry, there's no report. We're simply, we are pulling it out of committee, and we're going to act on it.
Okay.
Okay?
So motion, motion to pull it out of committee and take it as an emergency item?
No, we already did.
It's already been done? Okay. So.
Will you please talk about the circumstances that brought us here?
I shall. The reason for us taking this document as an emergency item and to take it out of committee is because the appointee was not available to be interviewed at our personal committee meeting yesterday, but we see the urgency of this appointment, and we value the person that's being appointed. Therefore, we are not withdrawing without prejudice, but taking the item as an emergency, as I said. So this is for the appointment to Lawrence Redevelopment Authority of Ms. Janelle Graciano, and this will be for. It does not say for how long. No, it does not. The cover sheet from. I have it. But the cover sheet doesn't, it doesn't say how many years. What I'm looking for is the term.
The term.
The term is not indicated. It is not. Oh, wait, no, length of residence. It's not specifying.
I would imagine it's a statutory term, so if you reference a statutory term, I'll rely upon that for a report.
Okay.
How long? I'm not sure what the statute would require, but I'll check with the city attorney. Okay.
Okay. So it will be for the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority for Ms. Janelle Graciano for the statutory term indicated, and I I submit that as form of.
Do you want to make that informal motion?
A formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Ms. Graciano, will you come forward?
She is here this evening.
Counselors, Ms. Graciano was not aware that we were having the Personal Committee last night. Because we've been having problems in not meeting the deadline of the 30 days, which had been very difficult for reasons that we can discuss later, we were not able to interview Ms. Graciano, so we have the opportunity now to do so, and rather than missing the deadline, we can make a decision tonight. So personally, I have known Ms. Graciano for 20, 25 years.
Counsel President, excuse me, sir. We have no background information, at least I don't. Was this supposed to be part of our packet?
Well, the problem, no, the problem is that.
I've got two of Sharon Rubio's.
It wasn't the package of, it wasn't a package of the Personal Committee, but we're, don't you have information about?
No, I'll have this too from the previous, previous applicant, so none, I don't necessarily.
Let me give, let me give you, let me give you briefly a summary, and then you can ask questions. I have known Ms. Graciano for 25 years. She has been a pillar in the community. She has worked in real estate for almost for that many years, so she's very knowledgeable about development and real estate, and I think she would be a tremendous access to the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, so I'm definitely going to vote in support of her appointment. I'm going to open for questions. Yes?
Yes, I also know, I want to echo some of the words of the Counsel President, I also have the benefit of knowing Ms. Graciano for a very long time, and she has done fantastic work, not only as, you know, a family leader, right, leading the families in the in the community with, you know, some of the private schools that your children have been involved in and you being a part of that, but also you've you've had your own small businesses, and I know a lot of people who got their hair styled by you are probably missing you a lot right now, but you had a fantastic business. You've also done fantastic in terms of, you know, the property and real estate and and being a part of your community, wherever that is, you know, making certain that that you are part. you are part of developing that community, and also involving, if I may just get a little sexist right now, but involving women in the, in the development of their own community, which is, was a lot that we did, through Women's Agendas, symposiums, and stuff like that, that you were an important part of. So, I too request that my colleagues please, I make an appeal to you to vote in favor of Ms. Graciano's appointment.
Does anybody else have a question? Mr. Tumi?
I'm waiting for a copy of the...
Yeah, waiting for what?
Waiting for a question.
A copy, okay.
Copy of a copy.
Then let's wait a few seconds.
Make a couple of copies. There was a question last night, though, between what was put on the application.
Oh, yes, yes, I forgot to mention that. Yes, I spoke to, to Mrs. Graciano about that, and it was a mistake on the application.
So, she still wants to be appointed to that particular?
Yes, there was a mistake in the application about the, the commission. Yes. Stay so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He didn't want anyway, he's printing them out.
Yes, exactly. Okay, you all said? Mr. Pund, do you have any questions? I just got this. No?
Council President, well, he gets his, his eyes situated on what he wants to do over there. I just wanted to say that I know Ms. Graciano for many years, when we first opened up the Lawrence Family Development Charter School, her daughter went there, and she was doing hair at that time, I was the secretary there, it was, so to see people that are still in the community, still investing in the community, she could have been part of different commissions, she could have been, she could have been on, we just had somebody be on the Commission on Disabilities because of her personal, so she, she's a person that could fit in with her capabilities, and with her resume, and her rapport, and who she's, who she is, and where she's placed in this community, she could have been part of a myriad of our commissions, and I'm excited that you're part of, at least one of the ones where you can make a difference. We do have solid people on other commissions, but you, I believe that this is one of the solid places where you will definitely make an impact and help our city grow, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Les? Go ahead.
Very, very quick, we're getting punchy and drunk, and that punch drunk, who is the entire, I've heard about you a while ago, you had the balloon business before, did you?
Excuse me?
You had a real estate business, right, for a while?
I, I am a real...
Real estate, okay. So, I've heard, I've heard some good things about you.
Coco and Early.
Yeah.
Coco and Associates.
How many years have you been there now?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay.
So, anything, long and short of it is, I think the LRA needs to have someone like you, who's a, who's a small business owner, essentially, and doing that kind of work, and I think you're gonna bring a lot to the value, I used to serve on the LRA as well for a number of years, so I know that this is, you're gonna be a very good appointment, so I speak from a little bit of experience, and I thank you for your involvement in applying.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
I'm excited.
We're gonna go for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for waiting all this time.
Okay, let's move along, we're gonna go into committee reports. Committee reports, I'm sorry?
You passed communications, and I have an urgent communication.
Hold on to that, hold on.
Okay.
Hold on to that. We will go back to that, okay? Mr. Chairman of the Bojangles Finance Committee, Document three sixteen fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, Document three sixteen fifteen is the acceptance of distressed properties identification and revitalization grant, it was based on, on the amount of eighty thousand dollars, it was placed on the agenda by Mr. James Barnes, and it came from the subcommittee with a favorable recommendation to approve, and I would like to make that informal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve Document three sixteen fifteen, it has been properly second, a delay discussion, if there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Madam Chair of the Audience Committee, continue please with Document two sixty-eight fifteen.
Thank you, Council President, Document two sixty-eight dash fifteen is a handicap parking at eighty-seven Railroad Street that has been put on the agenda by Media and Santiago, it came out with a favorable recommendation to order public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made to order public hearing on Document two sixty-eight fifteen, it has been properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue, Madam Chair.
Similar document, two seventy-one dash fifteen is also a handicap parking that is going to be located at twenty-six Texas Avenue, and that came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to order public hearing on Document two seventy-one fifteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue with Document two seventy-seven.
Document two seventy-seven dash fifteen is also a handicap parking that is going to be located at twenty-six Bearford Street, and that came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make it as a formal motion.
Motion has been made to order public hearing on Document two seventy-seven fifteen, it has been properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue with that, Madam Chair with Document three thirteen fifteen.
That is a provision of sale of used synthetic cannabinoid and other dangerous chemical, and that came out also with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second to order public hearing on Document three thirteen fifteen, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, okay. There is a, there is a communication that we received, and I'm sure that all of you received the communication, and I would like to take, to accept the motion to take this as an emergency.
Which communication?
So move.
Second.
Discussion has been made and properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Whoa, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me, let's, discussion, I'm sorry, I apologize.
We don't know who we're voting for.
The communication is, is relating to the layoff of, of the employees at Pol...
At Poltech.
Poltech.
And I had a discussion, a long discussion with Ethan Snow.
Why don't you go ahead and...
Yeah, I had a long discussion with Ethan Snow.
We have not voted on it.
Oh, you want us to vote on it first? Okay.
I don't, I have no way, so, I have no way, I have to have some communication, okay?
Okay, the vote, the vote is to suspend the rule, so, and then we can, she can explain what is that she's looking for, and she will make a motion, then we, okay? So, again, the motion is to suspend the rule, and, and to discuss this, accept this document as an emergency, okay? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue.
Thank you, Council President, as you know, I've had a long discussion with Ethan Snow, who happens to be the policy person for the New England Joint Board of Unite Here. I'm also being very close to the president of the international piece of this, which is called Warren Peppelci, who is the person who has sent every single counselor a letter, so if you haven't gotten it, it's probably still in your mailbox. The letter is giving us information as to what's going wrong. Unfortunately, it's not like when we had Merrill Lynch, I was gonna say, Molder Mills, you know, and the, the owner of Molder Mills, who would actually come to us and talk to us about what was going on with the industry, and what was going on with the business and the employees. Unfortunately, there has been a layoff of ninety workers, which is unprecedented in terms of this business, they have laid off people in the past as a seasonal thing, and have brought them back in the winter to be able to do the work. Now, they have purchased in Tennessee another, you know, factory, which is being now called Poltech at Tennessee, something like that, and they have taken machinery, you've probably already read this, but they've taken machinery from Poltech here and have sent it to Tennessee. They have not been able to answer the questions that the employees have, as to whether their intent is to move to Tennessee and close business here. If they were to close business here, that would mean three hundred jobs for Lawrence, the loss of three hundred jobs for Lawrence. So, I'm asking that we, I'm asking your support in sending a letter, like I said, I had a long discussion with Ethan Snow, sending a letter to the CEO, which is Gary Smith, requesting that he provide us some information as to what's going to happen. And I would like that letter, rather than it just be me, that it be something that we all support, so that we can get sooner rather than later, information as to what's really happening, and these people need to know, too, you know, what to do.
Information, the, the union has not been provided with information either, so the letter should ring, should say, not only to the city council, but also to the union.
To the union, okay, we could say that, but I think that we need to know, they had hired, they hired a public relations company who is providing very vague responses, so what we want is, is what's really going on, you know? Do we and the mayor have something to fear, you know, about losing all these jobs? Is your intent to leave Lawrence? So, we need to know, and I'm asking you, if you would please, sign a letter coming from all of us, that we all sign off on, or that you can elect to have, you know, the city clerk write and sign on our behalf, you know, a letter requesting this information.
You wanna make that informal motion?
Yes, that's an informal motion.
Motion is being made to write a letter to the CEO of Poltech, requesting information on what is going to be their action regarding Poltech and the layoff of employees in the city of Lawrence. Also, to, that same letter should support the release of information to the union.
Yes.
So, that motion has been properly second, let's discussion, Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, can we also include on that letter something saying, like, how we can help if it is an issue?
Yes, yes.
Because, I mean, we just requesting information, but we just, we gotta be available to find common ground and, and work with them.
Of course.
That's a good idea, I accept that, because that was actually what we discussed, to come in from a standpoint that we wanna be helpful, you know, sure, I accept that.
Are there any other?
That's a good idea.
What, what are we gonna, before we, we go off and vote on this, so what are we gonna do, are we gonna request for them to come in, or are we gonna request for, for them to answer our letter?
At this point, I would say I wanna ask them to answer our letter.
And then we can create questions on that?
With the questions, and we'll, you know, we'll have the specific questions, but also, you know, I'm thinking, it's, this is not the same relationship we had with Molder Mills.
With Mr. Ferstein, no.
With Mr. Ferstein, would be here in a second.
Yep.
And he was my model, actually, in graduate school, when I was doing business in policy studies, and the way that he handled, you know, his crisis situation with the fire, et cetera, versus, you know, the exes, Bardes' oil spill, which wasn't handled very well. But anyway, I, I think that, that it would be best just to request that they respond to our letter and answer specific questions regarding.
I, I have few dealings with them. No, I had dealings with them back in ninety-five for the fire, because my husband was one of the burn victims, Miguel Condón, he's the father of my, of my two oldest children.
Mr. Ferstein?
So, yeah, so, I mean, I had dealings with them then, when they were trying to close and all that kinda good stuff, so I was involved on a citizen, because I was never, you know, on a, on a wife's perspective, a family member, and, but I was involved in all of those negotiations and stuff like that, so that when this comes aboard, I was there when Aaron Ferstein and all of these people, when all that happened, so I have a lot of knowledge as to this stuff, too.
How different it is, and how different it feels.
How different it is, and what we could do to help, you know, because I kinda have an understanding of the old administration and the old ownership to the new situations that we have now, so it's gonna be, I, I'm excited about this, to be able to compare and, and do what we gotta do.
Yeah, but he was very involved with the community, too, and, you know, I don't...
It's a total different clothing.
If Councilor Abdul may have some recommendations. Does anybody wanna add anything to it? Do you wanna add something to the letter? You're good.
Okay, are we all said? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I guess conceptually, I don't have a problem with sending a letter, I guess conceptually, I don't have a problem with asking questions, I think there's a fine line between asking questions, telling somebody what to do, because we don't know all the facts, so, it sounds to me as though we're not crossing that line, we're just asking questions, but I would, I would rather know what those questions are, if I'm gonna sign my name to it. So, that's, that's my request, I mean, I'd like to know what the, I don't think we need to hash it out tonight, but I think we, before you, before you did, we should take a look at it first.
Yes, that's a, that's a good request, I mean, we could have Mr. Maloney, or Tony Maloney, who's going to draft the letter, send it out to everybody via email, and people can say, you know, what they feel good with or not, it really should be non-antagonistic, it should be friendly, saying, look, we're here, you know, we wanna work with you, we understand the important role you play in our community, and, and then ask them questions, you know, do you intend to close the, or are you gonna stay with a, like, an executive administrative piece?
That's fine, I don't wanna, many of us are retired, we wanna make some smart decisions, but I'd be happy to, to review that letter, I think that's the wisest way to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other? There's no other comment? Okay, again, we are voting on a motion to send a letter, you already know approximately the content of what the letter is going to be.
And we're getting copies of the four that's sent out, so if we're comfortable with it, we can sign it, I suspect that we will be, well, I will be, sorry.
Okay, let's take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, I know some of you are tired already, but, I'm sorry?
The young lady in the back, she's been sitting here all this time, I'm not sure what item.
No, 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 there.
No, she's not from Molder Mills, I'm just saying that, like, now that we're gonna take the vote, but we gotta figure out what she's here for.
Councillors, they, I need to enter turn a motion to withdraw Document two eighty-eight fifteen.
So move.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, motion to withdraw Document two eighty-eight fifteen, and it has been properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Councillor, just give me a few seconds, I'm waiting for Councillor Vasquez to find a document number that I would like to take out of committee, simply for discussion. So, meanwhile, meanwhile, let me, while he finds that document, let me...
Could we discuss quickly the fact that after there was so much discussion over trying to set up a committee of the whole meeting, there most likely won't be a committee on the whole meeting?
Well, let me, let me just briefly give you some information on this, the committee as a whole is supposed to meet tomorrow. Uh, the committee as a whole is supposed to meet tomorrow.
Right.
Uh, several people were invited to the committee, uh, for, to provide information, and this is regarding stipend. Uh, the city attorney was invited, uh, personal director, Fran Bonet, was invited, um, Mr. Aronello was invited, and Teresa Park was invited. Um, this person that were invited were told by the administration to write a letter indicating that they were not going to come, uh, to the committee as a whole until they got some additional information from the Ethics Commission. Um, so tomorrow, basically, the city attorney will be here.
I was gonna ask that. Oh, okay, so, 'cause I thought we wanted, um, information that they don't have.
There's gonna be, no, no, there's gonna be information, uh, the committee as a whole will be provided with information that have already been submitted, uh, by the different individuals.
Okay.
So we can, we can go ahead and have our meeting, uh, ask the attorney questions.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I believe that he has already some response from the Ethics Commission, and also we can, uh, we can discuss among ourselves, uh, or review, uh, the information that we have, and then determine what steps we follow from there.
Okay, I had a discussion with Mr. Bonet.
Yes.
And he thought he was speaking on behalf of all of the people that you requested.
Not on behalf of the city attorney.
And he didn't make that clear. And what, what he also said was that he believes that the Ethics Commission responds, and I'm just saying this, just to, you know, because everybody's do their day, right? That, um, the Ethics Commission responds, um, to people based on how they frame a question. And he believes that, um, that the opinion that was given orally, um, may not necessarily be a correct one.
That's why, again, that's why we need to meet tomorrow and have the attorney provide us with the information that we don't have, in addition to the information that has been provided by the different people that we requested information from.
So he's received the information, because I made sure that, um, when I, when I finished talking to Mr. Bonet, that Mr. Anicello knew that we're not only requesting information from the city side, but we would also be concerned about the stipends in the, you know, the school department as well, because there's some comparisons to be made.
I don't think that we, uh, we were entertaining matters of stipend from the school side, but that's something that we can look into, we can expand.
Oh, I'm just saying that, you know, um, if it's illegal for us, then it's illegal for them.
Of course, of course.
And if it's legal for us, then it's legal for them.
But again, I, I think.
I'm not saying it's either one, but...
No, 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 I, I understand that. That's why, again, but, but I, I think that we need to be, we need to be clear on what's gonna happen tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay? So...
Okay, so if we're going to, in fact, be here tomorrow, I thought that, um, we weren't.
Yes.
Um, then we're gonna be here for a shorter period than we thought.
It depends on how many questions and how much information we have, and the questions that we have about that information being provided, so it all depends, it all depends on, on the member.
Well, the advantage that people have is that when I chair, I don't ask questions.
Okay.
I let the, the members of the council ask the questions.
Oh, you found it? Oh, okay, excellent. Uh, councilors, I need a, I need a motion to suspend the rule and
But we're at...
Take document 202-15 out of the Bojeraan Finance Committee, and this is only for discussion.
What is it?
Uh, this is the water and sewer rate.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion to pull it out of committee only for discussion.
Second.
Okay? Motion has been made and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Okay, uh, let me give you some, some, uh, information on this. Uh, background information. Uh, back in July, this council approved a cut of 200 something, 200 plus, uh, 200,000 plus, uh, cut in the water department.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Which means that it was going to affect the water rate, water and sewer rate. Uh, when I created the document and sent it down to the committee, uh, it was intended, and I, and I requested, uh, the commissioner, Mr. Peña, to come to the Bojeraan Finance Committee with a proposal on the water and sewer rate, since that's something that is within our preview. We set rates.
Mm-hmm.
And we set taxes rate as well as water and sewer rate. Um, Mr. Peña, uh, did not prepare a recommendation, uh, because he was told by his supervisor, uh, the mayor, that he was not to prepare a report for the Bojeraan Finance Committee. And he's still, uh, not, uh, he's still not doing it. So we have here, well, he did send a, a letter.
A return response with the different rates.
Okay.
He did send that to the council members by...
Oh, you did? Do you remember what was, what was the, uh?
Through you, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, the letter stay, um, he did, he did submit a letter a couple of weeks ago, I don't remember exactly, yeah, I don't remember exactly the date, but I, I did read it, and the letter basically states that, uh, as the commissioner of the Water and Sewer Department, he is, uh, the only person that actually, um, assigns rates to the, uh, water and sewer charges in the city. It is actually not the city council that does it.
Okay.
So as a result of that...
That's not true.
Okay. That is something, obviously, that is something that we're gonna have to get a legal opinion from the city attorney as to, as to who set rates. Because as I remember correctly, when we increased the rate of water and sewer, this council, this council, not, I'm sorry, not this council, but back in 2000, 2000, oh, God, 2011, I think it was 2009.
Oh, nine, when we first...
It was in 2009 that the, the city council set an increased rate.
Thank you.
Uh, for water and sewer to be consecrative, a consecutive increase for three years. Were you, you were, were you there?
No.
Roger?
Yeah.
You were there?
Roger was here.
Okay, so the council voted on that?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
The council voted on the rate, yeah.
Exactly.
We didn't say they voted on the rate.
Exactly. So obviously, uh, the commissioner, the commissioner is saying that we are not entitled to set water rate for, uh, to set rates for water and sewer, and, uh, even though in the past, the city council voted to increase the water rate of, for three consecutive years. So we need to, uh, we need to, um, get a legal opinion on this matter, uh, so we can settle this one sum for all.
Mr. President, there's a big difference between voting for a rate that was designed and put together by someone else versus us adjusting a rate. There's a big difference between that.
Yes, yes. There, there was a difference, yes.
And we are adjusting.
Council President, I mean, he, he's clear in his memo. He said, first of all, he's already talked to the city attorney, it says here, number one. And number two, it doesn't say that we don't have a part to play, we have the authority to approve or deny a proposed rate modification. So I'm presuming that it, what it means is that they, they, meaning the water commissioner or whoever, provides the city council a number, a rate, and then we vote on it. So if he doesn't provide for us a rate, then we can't initiate that, that, it seems like that has to be initiated from, from the water commissioner, and that can't be initiated by us.
We voted on a reduction of the water and sewer department.
Right.
Okay? With the intention, with a sore intention of reducing the water rate. Uh, and, and I believe that we should discuss, as you can see here, both residential and commercial water rate are the same.
Right.
There are all those cities and towns that have a different, a difference of water rate for residential and commercial.
Right.
Okay? So, um, the question is, the question is, okay, and, and again, uh, it, it is the opinion of the city attorney that person to section, uh, so and so of the water and sewer department, uh, the water and sewer commission shall establish water and sewer rate, and that while the Lawrence City Council has the authority to approve or deny a proposed rate modification, it does not possess the authority to initiate it. Okay? But, but we did initiate it, uh, no matter what, by, by cutting, uh, $209,000.
Right.
So this is...
But he also says...
I'm sorry?
But he's also saying, that said, if the department were to submit a proposal, this is what it would look like.
And it would stay the same.
Right, and I, I don't think, um, I mean, I, I know he's young, and I know that, um, it, it was said that he was being arrogant, I didn't read that as arrogant.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, no, he's not being arrogant at all.
Yeah, I don't get it.
He's simply following, he's simply following, uh...
The ordinances. It's right here. We're reading it.
The ordinance is clear.
Okay.
Water Commissioner shall establish rates to be charged consumers for the sale of water, says it right here in the ordinance.
What'd he say?
Do you mind, Council President, if I read the first clause?
Yes, go ahead.
Do we do it again?
Go ahead.
This is, and he references it, this is 13.04.020, establishment of water rates and charges for sewer connections. Subject to the approval of the Director of the Department of Public Works and the City Council, the Water Commissioner shall establish rates to be charged consumers for the sale of water and charges for service connections made by employees of the water department. In establishing the rates for the sale of water, the commission shall take into consideration the operating and maintenance cost of the water department, and it continues. But the operative clause, if you, if I may, is that, uh, the Water Commissioner shall establish rates to be charged consumers for the sale of water.
Well, there's been a cut, and, um, if the rates maintain themselves as they are...
And then it comes to the city council.
Yeah.
Okay, so, again, if, what he's saying here is that if, if, if he's, he will be proposing a new water and sewer rate, uh, he's making a recommendation such as this. Uh, obviously, he's not making a recommendation yet, he's simply saying that if, okay? Uh, my feeling is that we should ask him to submit a, uh, to submit a, a, a recommendation for a new water rate based on the cuts that we made. And then we, at that point, we can, uh, discuss as to whether we can approve it or change it, uh, and whether we should consider, uh, a difference between the residential and commercial.
Right, because it also says here, we can adjust.
Mm-hmm.
By his own wording.
Okay, uh, yes, councillor...
Thank you, um, Council President, could we also ask, um, ask that, um, a discovery or research be done of, of the neighboring towns, so that we know what they're paying in turn, so that we're, you know, and going back a few years, going back like maybe five years into the discovery, so that we have, um, you know, what our local town, like, our surrounding towns were paying, like, within the past, like, five years, so that we know how much they've gone up, how much they've fluctuated, and that kind of thing.
We can, uh, we can ask him for, to do a little research and provide us with that information also.
I think five years would be good, going back five years.
Yeah, I think so.
Um, just, um, as...
What I'm, councillor, what I'm proposing is that we ask, uh, Mr. Peña, uh, to provide us with information on all the cities and towns, what they are doing on the water and sewer rate, uh, versus residential and commercial.
Yes.
And that he presents, if he wants to present what he's presenting here, to present to the Bojeraan Finance Committee, a proposal on, uh, on a new tax rate, uh, that would be reflective of the cut that was made of $209,000.
And if we could do a most likely scenario and a less likely scenario, so that we are basically not, like, on the same page, kind of like what Alex did with the tax rate, like 116 and 170, kind of give us a little bit of an idea of what it will fluctuate and whatever, so that way we're not, um, having another meeting after that one, because we decided to do it a different way.
Okay.
So if we can...
Yes, uh...
Sorry, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Are we initiating the process by doing this?
No, 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 we cannot initiate, again, it is stated that we cannot initiate the process, we are asking him.
Asking.
To initiate, to initiate the process by providing us with information.
But I'm, I'm a little confused, if we ask him, that means that we're initiating the process.
We're not telling him, we are asking him to provide us with information.
Uh, okay, and, and we are asking him to provide us with, uh, water rate suggestion, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's initiating the process, I guess? So we technically initiating the process?
We're asking him to initiate it.
We are asking him to initiate the process.
All right. I'm just confused, because I mean, uh, it's kind of like, you know, to me, it sounds like we are asking him to provide us with a rate for us to take it from there. So that means that we're initiating, but I mean, if you guys see it differently, that's fine.
No, I think that, uh, Council President, if I may, I think, um, we're gonna further, um, look into this by talking to the city attorney, et cetera, and what it's meant, because we've already cut the department, so it means they cannot collect money that's gonna be over what we've told them, you know, that they're allowed. So I see it as, we have to have a discussion.
I mean, I'm more than happy to discuss any, any type of rate that are gonna benefit the community in, in general, or any changes, because that's basically our point at the city council, changing conditions, uh, to improve or not necessarily improve the community, and, uh, that's what I'm here for. I just don't wanna violate our own ordinance.
Yeah, it'll be okay.
Just let, just let me remind the councilors that the, uh, water and sewer department has a surplus of 13.5 million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
In surplus.
But they were right.
Not saying that they are not, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, I just specified what I was saying about, in terms of initiating the process or not.
Yes. I'm just saying that, Council President, some people would have worried that perhaps they wouldn't have enough to run the department, but they, they have plenty, and, um, you know, which is why I'm comfortable with having this discussion about reduced rates.
And again, we have never been given the opportunity to review, uh, and compare how other communities, uh, do their tax rate. Right now, it's a...
Well, not recently.
Right, right now, it's, it's a one-to-one, uh, and, and if we look at Methuen right now, uh, the rate is very different from what we, from what we do. So Methuen residential pay far less than what we pay.
Mm-hmm. That's true, but I, and I remember going through, looking at the rates, um, back in, I believe it was '08, when we decided, uh, to do a five-year plan and gradually...
Motion to go past 12?
There's a motion to go past 12, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 No.
Roll call.
No. I'll say yes, because we have to finish the...
Exactly.
New business.
We've stayed here before, what's the big deal? Yeah, we're already here, though, this is what we, this is what we were elected to do. Hash it out.
Council Vice President. Council Vice President.
Uh, yes.
Council Abdu?
No.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Almonte?
Yes.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Tumi?
No.
Council LaPlante?
No.
Council Vasquez?
Yes.
And Council President?
Yes.
Okay, so just very quickly...
Just briefly, just briefly, again, uh, what, what... Just briefly, just briefly. Again, what, what I'm looking for is a motion to simply ask the Commissioner to provide us, to provide the Bajaram Finance Committee with information on how all the cities and towns address the rates, uh, and then to consider presenting a, a rate that will reflect, uh, the reduction of two hundred and nine thousand. So I, I need a motion on that.
Mr. President-
So, second?
Okay, motion had been made and properly second discussion?
Yep. Mr. President, I, I'd like to provide some background information as well, so what, what has transpired. So the first thing is that the, the budget cuts that happened within the Water and Sewer Department, uh, we did take those motions with the intention of reducing the rate. But it is important to recognize that making the, the cuts is not parallel to a rate reduction automatically.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that, that is the first clarification. Secondly, uh, within the Budget and Finance Committee, we did request the same information from the Water and Sewer Commissioner, and if I am not mistaken, I believe either, I think it was on November second, the day before election, I had a conversation with Mr. Peña, and I'm also aware that you had a conversation with Mr. Peña.
It was before, before you did.
Before?
Yes, it must have been before.
So, no, but I know, because that day you spoke to me on the phone as well about the same-
Oh, okay.
So it was, I believe, on, on the second, uh, that we were having that discussion. I spoke to Mr. Peña, you spoke to Mr. Peña, in reference to the same idea. So this is information that has been, um, asked, and as a result of that, he has provided us with a response that dates, um, November sixteenth. So after the November second phone conversation that I know you had and that I had with him, it happens on, on the same day, back to back. Um, and then on the tenth, he appears that you submitted another memorandum. He did provide us with, uh, a, an informational, so I'll, I'll read. This memorandum is informational only and shall not be interpreted as a proposal. So we have made the request, and he has answered to the request. So are we asking him the same request that we did previously? Because-
No, no, no.
What I foresee happening is him submitting the same-
The request is for him to provide us with, uh, all the cities and towns' water and sewer rate, how they deal with it.
Okay. But, uh-
And also to consider submitting a, and again, this is, this is only, this is not, this is not an action of submitting for, for the Bajaram Finance Committee to consider-
Of course not.
So it is not an action.
And I agree with you on that. And, and it's because, as stated in, um, our Code of Municipal Ordinance, Section thirteen oh four zero twenty and thirteen oh eight two hundred, uh, it is pursuant to the Commissioner to establish-
Mm-hmm.
Rates and for us to approve. Uh, the Commissioner at this moment, or based on the letter that he has submitted to us, it is not suggesting a, a modification to the rate. Could we request it? Sure, I'll support the motion to, to request it. But again, I, I, I believe that the same response will be provided. But I'll, I'll support a motion to request it. Uh, I don't see why not. But the, the same information has been requested via phone, uh, in, via writing, in memorandum, uh, because I know we had this discussion previously.
Yeah, this, this letter is requesting additional information.
Okay, perfect.
Now, we also need to look into how, how, uh, the City Council was able to set, uh, back in two thousand and nine, ten, and eleven, how they were able to set rates, water and sewer rate.
It explained it. They sent it down to us, the Council, and the Council then either approved it or denied it. So that's what happened.
Okay.
Yeah, they send us a, um, by me-
And Mr. President, I have the floor.
After-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, a question was asked, so-
I, I thought you had finished.
Yeah. No, and, and lastly, I do want to point something out. I know age was brought up at a given point. I think that, uh, Mr. Peña is one of the most qualified individuals. Um, we have a lot of great employees, but Mr. Peña is definitely one of those that goes above and beyond, regardless of his age. Um, as a young person, I am proud to say that we have someone like Mr. Peña working for our city here, uh, who's very responsible, who's following our ordinance and our charter to the point to ensure that we do what's correct. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, if I may, Counsel President-
Go ahead.
Um, just saying, no one is saying that he's not qualified. Um, in fact, including him in the discussion, um, means that we believe he's qualified. Um, the important thing here is, there was a budget cut. How do we address that? You know? It seems to me that the way that it can be addressed would be to make some reductions in rates. Um, we are requesting that he be a part of that discussion, and I know that the mayor will have a discussion with him, because even though it says that he's to initiate it, there's no one that's gonna tell me that it's not the mayor who initiates, you know, what the rates are gonna be. And, you know, whether or not it comes before the council. So something needs to be done. I don't know where I got the water rates from, but officially, I guess we're asking for them, and it should be done. And I think we need to lower it down a little bit on the arrogance, because, um, we're just trying to do what's best for the community.
Mm-hmm.
And if we are given the proper tools to do it, that's exactly what we're gonna do. And if, if they have other directives, um, or recommendations as to how we can proceed to do what's best for the community, we'll be happy to listen to that, too. Um, but we don't need the arrogance.
Thank you.
Counsel President, real quick. So we keep talking about looking to reduce the tax rate, and no one's actually brought the other option, which is if we have a surplus, that money gets carried over into the following year. And, and we should all realize that we are having the same water tax rate. We're not scheduled to have an increase until, I think, the year twenty twenty-one, if I remember correctly. So we're talking way out there. But if you ask anybody in the Water Department, they will tell you, we have tremendous needs that need to be dealt with. We have an aging infrawaters, uh, infrastructure system in our city. And so now is not the time to be going ahead, and, and we need to use that, those monies to actually deal with securing our water, our water distribution, as well as our treatment plant. We need to get those things done. So I, it's, um-
We, we all know-
Just so you're aware, I'm not gonna be supporting this tonight, and I didn't support it during the budget talks, so I just, I, I understand what our needs are.
No, I understand. Uh, we all know the great need that we have to replace pipes and improve the, uh, the qua, not the quality of our water, because our water is probably one of the best-
Mm-hmm.
Uh, across the nation. Uh, what we need to improve is the delivery system. Uh, we continue, we, uh, this council has approved, uh, the Water and Sewer Department taking several loans to do this work. And obviously, we can continue doing that.
They're not using this.
We'll continue doing that at a pace that, that will not burden the taxpayer. Okay? So, uh, again, the letter is to see whether we can initiate, not initiate, but we can get more informed on what is, what is happening in other cities and towns, and whether, uh, this council, uh, should look into the possibility of, of changing, uh, the rate between residential and commercial. Okay? So, uh, let's take a vote, uh, on the motion to send the letter. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose?
No.
Okay. Roll call.
Is that way, Mr.? I was falling asleep.
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante?
No.
Counsel Tumi?
No.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Almonte?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Abdu?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President?
Yes.
Counsel President?
Yes. Okay, uh, counselors, unless you have any other matter-
Mr. President-
From the table matters, uh, yes, go ahead.
Uh, are we going to table document here resubmitted to-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes. Uh, resubmit to the Bajaram Finance Committee.
Resubmit to Bajaram Finance?
Second, I second.
Okay, motion has been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Uh, Counsel, unless there's any, any other matter from table, I'm going to-
Please.
Uh, send a, a few documents, which is, has been slightly reducing, which is great, because we're getting to the end of the year. Document three twenty-three fifteen, handicap parking, I'm sending that to the ordinance committee. Document three twenty-four fifteen, Lawrence Recycling Department, we, uh, if this is a budgetary matter, Bajaram Finance Committee. Document three twenty-five fifteen, taxi license to the ordinance committee. Document three twenty-six fifteen, Lawrence Fire Department, this is a grant, Bajaram Finance Committee. Document three twenty-seven fifteen is also a grant going to the Bajaram Finance Committee. Document three twenty-eight fifteen, uh, is also a grant going to the Bajaram Finance Committee, and document three twenty-nine fifteen, handicap parking, going to the ordinance committee. Counselors, uh, committees, committee meetings.
Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more item. And this is, oh, just to suspend the rule and take document three thirty, uh, as an emergency, so that I can send it to committee.
So moved.
What is document three thirty?
My, motion to take document three thirty, suspend the rules, and take it as a, an emergency. Uh, it has been properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. I'm sending document three thirty fifteen to the ordinance committee.
And what is it?
All gold license request?
Yes. Okay.
All gold.
An all gold dealer license.
All gold dealer license.
All gold.
All gold.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, so, uh, is there a Bajaram Finance Committee meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay?
Tomorrow, there's a Bajaram-
I mean, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, not tomorrow. Not tomorrow.
We have a, a committee as a whole.
Committee as a whole is scheduled for seven thirty. Bajaram Finance is scheduled-
Seven thirty? Who said seven thirty?
I, I think we, I think we did, yes. We did.
Or is it seven, right?
Yes. And, and the Bajaram Finance Committee is meeting before that.
At seven P.M.
Yes. Okay, great. So the Bajaram Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow first, and then at seven thirty, the Committee as a whole.
And ordinance is gonna be Thursday at seven?
Meeting on Thursday.
Yep, at seven.
At seven. Uh, I'm not gonna be here for that meeting, so it is important that, uh, boss in, uh-
What's gonna happen?
Yes, okay. The ordinance committee, so they, they need a quorum on Thursday. I'm not gonna be here on Thursday, so it's important, okay?
So if any one of you is not gonna be able to take it-
Okay, I thought they were saying tomorrow.
No, 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 Thursday. Okay, great.
How's important?
Uh, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
No.
Roll call.